2020 at 7:12 PM on my clock. And request a roll call, please.
Counselor Linville?
Present.
Counsel President Akervall?
Here.
Counselor Leehan?
Here.
Counselor West?
Here.
Mayor Knapp?
Here. Counselor West, we don't have any video of you.
It's, oh, hold on. How's that?
We have a box, but no video.
Do you guys see it now?
No, but we can hear you. That's fine.
I can see the video of me. That's weird. I can totally see myself. It looks fine on my end.
Okay.
So let's keep moving here. Starting with a pledge of allegiance, if we could, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And can you mute them?
To the republic.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm open to a motion on order of agenda.
Your Honor, you move to approve the order of agenda.
I do. Motion from Counselor West, second from Counselor Linville. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand, both.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five to nothing. Thank you very much. Under Mayor's business, first up, we had a placeholder for an appointment for a planning commission, but that has not matured at this point, so I don't have anything to offer you yet at this time. We'll work with that a little later on. The second thing I have is a proclamation, which is germane, I think, especially in this, I gotta find it. Especially in a particular social environment, and all of the equity concerns that we've heard expressed. I wish I could find where this is located in our agenda though.
It's under Mayor's business. First item in your packet.
Yeah, well, it's after housing.
Page forty-five, I believe, of the electronic packet.
There we go. There we go. So this is something that we have not done exactly like this before, and it was brought to my attention by some people in our community that the observation of what is called Juneteenth is something that is done around the country, and it has a history that frankly, I was not familiar with, but the information contained within the declaration that I would like to read, and I think it's, like I say, germane to where we are at this particular point in time. So this is a proclamation declaring June nineteenth, 2020, as a celebration of Juneteenth in Wilsonville. The print's kind of small. Whereas the Emancipation Proclamation was an executive order issued by President Abraham Lincoln on September twenty-two, eighteen sixty-two, to be effective January one, eighteen sixty-three, that freed approximately three and a half million slaves in the Confederate states. And whereas, while President Abraham Lincoln had officially freed the slaves, enforcement of this order became difficult to enforce in areas where there were few Union soldiers. Texas, in particular, remained unaffected as it was geographically isolated from Union troops, and thus was the last Confederate state to have the proclamation announced. And whereas many slave owners moved to Texas looking to not be affected by the enforcement of the proclamation, by the end of the Civil War on April nine, eighteen sixty-five, the number of slaves in Texas had increased by tens of thousands despite the proclamation. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Major General Gordon Granger from the headquarters of Texas in Galveston with more than two thousand troops, left, I think that means left, to travel to every county in Texas informing the people that all slaves were free. And whereas the Juneteenth celebration was started a year later in Texas to celebrate the importance of June nineteenth and the announcement that slaves, slavery had been abolished. It was from this celebration that Juneteenth, June, combining with, combined with nineteenth, was born. And whereas Juneteenth is celebrated in forty-seven of the fifty states, Oregon being one of them, but it is not officially recognized as a national holiday. Legislation has stalled in Congress. And traditions include public meetings, readings of the Emancipation Proclamation, singing traditional songs such as Swing Low Sweet Chariot and Lift Every Voice and Sing, and reading of works by noted African-American writers such as Ralph Ellison and Anjelou, as well as sharing of slave food delicacies, including barbecue pit, and certain foods that became popular and synonymous with Juneteenth celebrations, such as strawberry soda pop. Now therefore, I, Tim Knapp, as Mayor of the city of Wilsonville, encourage all citizens to join with neighbors and Wilsonville's African-American community to declare that June nineteenth, 2020, be celebrated as celebration of Juneteenth in Wilsonville, dated the day of June, 2020. I wanted to thank the members of our community who brought this to our attention, and I think it's entirely appropriate in this particular time of concern for equity and opportunity for especially black people who have been in our country for hundreds of years and have still not achieved full equality because of some of the strictures that we place within our society. So thank you for that, and we'll look forward to continuing the dialogue on equity within our community and within our society. So I don't think I have too much.
Do we need to, Your Honor?
Yes.
Do, do we need to adopt this proclamation?
No.
We don't normally adopt proclamations, but
I thought we usually did, but.
Not proclamations, they're just read into the record. And the mayor signs them.
Well, I know they're always read into the record, but I thought we adopted them, but, okay.
Okay, and I will note that next council meeting is scheduled for July sixth, regular setup. I think we'll probably still be on video at the way things are moving, especially in light of increasing COVID cases that are springing up in places around the state. It's probably premature to hope for things to be better that quickly. So I think that would be the plan. All right, let's go ahead then and proceed with our communications, wherein we have, I believe, a couple of visitors. First of all, somebody from Wilsonville Community Sharing?
No.
Maybe Pamela Woodruff?
Well, they were supposed to join us by Zoom, but we do not have them in, in the waiting room at this point. So maybe we could invite them back to the next meeting.
Yes. The other communications I have listed is from Metro on the Get Moving Transportation 2020 bond measure. We have Ms. Tyler Frisbee, perhaps?
Mister. Yes.
We do have. Okay, good. Would be happy to have her join us. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Just fine. How are you?
Excellent. Hello, counselors, thank you so much for having me. My name is Tyler Frisbee. I'm Transportation Policy and Federal Affairs Manager for Oregon Metro, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about a series of transportation investments that our region has been working on for, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, two years, three years?
I don't want to remember.
Yeah. I guess it really depends on how you count. I'm gonna, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yes. I think so.
Excellent. Okay. Let me start this. So in the midst of this pandemic, and as we all find new ways of getting together and running government and showing up and being part of our communities, I think it's really important to remember we are still one region, and we are still dependent on another. Our economies are deeply connected, and our future lies with one another across the region, across the three counties. We are, we are very much an interconnected set of communities. And we still need to think big. This feels like an intimidating time, and we know that if we're going to come out of this stronger, if we're going to come out of this healthier, if we're going to come out of this ready to rebuild our economy and rebuild our transportation system and rebuild our region as we know it, we have to think big, and we have to dream big, and we have to implement it. These four photos show a series of places around the Portland metro region where we have done major investments and tried to do big things, and it's time to do that across the region. We know that growth is happening, and we know that growth will continue even in this moment of economic recession. Growth, people are actually still moving here, which is crazy to think about. This map, or the chart you see in front of you, shows the growth that has happened from nineteen ninety until twenty twenty, and then the growth that is projected, projected to happen out till twenty sixty. And one of the things I always like to remind people when you look at the first part of the map is there were two major recessions in the late nineties and in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. We had huge recessions in the Portland metro area, and people kept moving here. And we know that that's going to continue to happen. And we know that we need to be prepared for it. I'm going to show a series of visuals. This is what our urban areas in the region looked like in nineteen ten, nineteen forty, nineteen sixty, nineteen eighty, two thousand, and two thousand and twenty. And I think, aside from the obvious growth and how quickly the region has grown, I think the other thing that's important here is you see all the, all the development that has occurred along our transportation system. And that is a reminder that investing in our transportation system is what helps create and spur a lot of that development, and it also helps focus that development so that we're really serving true industrial centers or employment centers. I think Wilsonville is a great example. You guys have done some really focused investment in parts of your community in order to be ready for residential growth, in order to be ready for industrial growth or for more employment. And a large part of that investment that you've done to be ready is, is investing in your transportation system because you know that that's one of the things that employees and people need to get around, and it's something that businesses need to get around. So back in twenty sixteen, when our council, when we all across the region, I think everyone was really beginning to feel the effects of the growth in a deeply visceral way. Our council said, look, a lot of these issues, we know that they are actually regional in nature. Affordable housing is something that is impacting all of us, whether you live in Wilsonville or Tigard or Happy Valley or downtown Portland. Wanting to access nature and the out-of-doors and valuing that part of our region and that part of being an Oregonian, that's something that we all value. Moving around our, and moving around our transportation system and being able to get from place to place, those are really important things for all of us, and they're things that cross city boundaries. If we just expected one city to address their housing problem and everyone else didn't take action, we know that wouldn't solve the problem. And so our council embarked on a, what ended up becoming a four-part objective to prepare for growth and help the region be ready. And they invested in, they put an affordable housing bond on the ballot, and our region passed the first regional affordable housing bond in the country. I think that's worth remembering for us. It's a really big deal for us, but it's also a really big deal nationally. And that's going to provide housing for twelve thousand people, twelve thousand families in our region. In twenty, that was in twenty eighteen. In twenty nineteen, our region renewed the open spaces measure to help protect open space and natural areas across the region, helping protect clean water, wildlife habitat, and making sure that people have a way to be outside easily. Just this May, our region supported one of the largest homeless service measures in the country to help people who are living on the streets or close to living on the streets, find housing, stay in housing, and give us the help that they need in order to, to get a roof over their head and live the life that they want. And then finally, for the last two years, our, our council and the task force that they assembled to help weigh in on that, they have been working on a transportation measure for the region, thinking about how do we as a region prepare for the growth that's happening? How do we help people still get around? How do we help folks get to work, get to school, get to church? You know, get to their kid's soccer game, and how do we help businesses thrive in this moment? And so I'm here today to talk to you about that measure. One thing that's really important in this moment in time, that measure is going to result in the creation of, the direct creation of thirty, more than thirty-seven thousand jobs. For comparison, that's more than the number of people employed by Nike within the region. So it is a huge employment boon, and it's gonna, for so many families in the region, it's gonna mean a roof over their head and food on their table and access to opportunity that wouldn't otherwise happen. So what is in that measure? We're going to put the region back to work, building safe, connected communities and helping kids get around safely. We're going to put the region back to work, helping reduce our climate pollution and air pollution with a whole series of investments from low emission buses to better transit service overall and to options for people who, who don't want to be stuck driving their car in traffic. We're going to put the region back to work and make sure that the opportunities and benefits that come with that investment are offered to everyone around the region, particularly communities that have been historically left out of these investments. And we're going to put the region back to work so that people can get to work without spending hours stuck in traffic. I don't think I need to, well, actually, it's probably been a little bit since most of us have been stuck in traffic, but if I was giving this presentation in February or January, it wouldn't need to remind us all how much more time we were spending in traffic than we have been in the past. And this region is really trying, this measure is going to help provide options for people so they have reliable ways to get around without increasing amounts of time in traffic. We're going to put the region back to work so that we're prepared for the next disaster. This is a picture of the Burnside Bridge, which is one of the key east-west connections identified by the state in case of earthquake or other major seismic event or some other major natural disaster. The problem with Burnside being one of the key connectors over the Willamette is that it will actually fall down in the case of a major earthquake. And this measure will help rebuild the bridge and the connecting streets so that we can move people and goods across in case of an emergency. And we're going to put people back to work in a way that helps stabilize communities and ensures that the people who are living there now receive the benefit of these investments. This measure, and I, Mayor Knapp has been actually a really wonderful advocate on this side, is thinking and making sure that when we invest in the transportation system, we make sure that we're doing that in a way so that people who are living there right now can experience it and they aren't priced out or forced to move. So what will we build? The measure builds, has a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty miles of roadway improvements, and that is across the region. And then in addition to those a hundred and fifteen and, or a hundred and twenty miles, it also invests in sixty miles of roadway planning. And that's because one of the things we, we've heard really clearly throughout this process is, look, we have immediate needs and we need, we need to meet them now, right? We know we need to invest in order to, to make sure that our transportation system can survive the next twenty years. But we want to also be ready for the next thirty years and the next forty years. And so this measure put, has a lot of planning in it in order to make sure that we know what we need to do after we do these sort of immediate actions. The measure has twenty-five to thirty-five miles of new bus lanes and two hundred and sixty new transit signal priorities across the region. And actually, I hate the term transit priority signals because they do give you the option to support and move buses quickly, which is really important. But what, what the modernized signals do is actually let you adjust the signals for traffic. So I think we've all probably spent too much time sitting at a traffic signal where it's clear that the timing just isn't working out, and there's a huge backup on one side and people are moving through on the other with lots of space in between. And upgrading our, upgrading our intersections and our traffic signals is one of the cheapest ways that we can help reduce congestion and get people moving. The measure is going to build eleven miles of a new max lane from downtown Portland all the way to Bridgeport Village. By the time that max line is built, it will carry a freeway's worth of traffic every morning, which is really amazing. And we're going to build forty-five miles of new sidewalk, four thousand new streetlights, and two hundred and eighty marked crosswalks around the region. We heard over and over from people about how they were sick of feeling nervous walking with their kids, or they were worried about their grandchildren going to school, or they themselves were worried about walking around in their community, and they wanted to have sidewalks, and they wanted to have crosswalks, and they wanted to feel like this is a place where they could really move around on their own without being in danger. And finally, the measure is going to build a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty miles of improved bikeways around the region. So where will we build it? The measure took a little bit of a different approach from previous, previous transportation efforts. And it said, rather than spreading projects around the region like peanut butter, let's focus on key connections that we have in the region where we have growing employment centers, growing residential areas, growing industrial areas, and let's make sure that we are leveraging investment along that entire corridor to really be able to make a difference for the way people move around. And so there are sixteen corridors in this measure that are receiving focused investment so that they will work better to help people move around the region as a whole. And I'm going to talk, you guys get the slightly longer presentation. I'm going to try to move through it a little bit quickly, but I'm going to talk about the investments in Washington County and Clackamas County. Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
Well, I did. People that are not familiar with looking at that map might say, well, where's the freeways? And, you know, the note that the committee specifically said we're not going to, to spend our local money on federal highways. There's a whole different funding structure for that. We're going to try to do the connections that otherwise get left behind.
Yes. Yes, that is a great, thank you for that reminder. That was something that, the task force that Mayor Knapp spent so much time with us, and we really appreciate that, and I think there's a picture of him coming up. But the task force that met for a year and a half, twenty-three meetings, they said, you know, we know we have, we know our freeways need help. There's a lot of work going on. We went and got a whole bunch of money in HB twenty seventeen to bring money to the region to invest in our freeway system. There's more investment happening in the freeways. There's, Boone Bridge is a major conversation in the region right now. But a lot of that money's got to come from the state, and a lot of that money's got to come from the feds. And for our region, the places that get left behind, that don't get any state money, that don't get any federal money, and that our local jurisdictions can't really afford to take care of on their own, are these really big, long arterials. And these are the, these are the places that the region needs to take care of. We need to, we need to step up to the plate. We need to have some ownership, and we need to make these work for us. So thank you for the reminder, Mr. Mayor. So some of these corridors, in Washington County, the Southwest Corridor obviously is a key investment, and I'm, I want to make sure, oh, good, I've got my pictures. So this is, as I said, it's the region's longest max rail line, or light rail line from downtown Portland, connecting downtown Portland with OHSU, with PCC, with downtown Tigard, and ending up at Bridgeport Village. So really connecting a lot of growing, growing areas, a lot of critical employment areas and residential centers. And by the time it's built, it will carry more than a, a traffic force, a freeway force of traffic every trip. So it's a very exciting project that hope, that will have really, frankly, will have a really big impact on the freeway system because you're giving people an option that's reliable and they can use consistently. We are investing in the TV Highway, which is one of, you know, moves right now thousands of commuters out from Forest Grove all the way through Hillsborough into downtown Portland, and frankly, in the other direction as well. And the measure is going to help invest in a rapid bus system to move people really quickly and reliably, particularly a lot of the employees who are moving from Hillsborough to downtown Portland. It's going to add five to ten miles of new sidewalk, twelve hundred new streetlights, and modernize the signal system in a way that's really going to help this road move quickly and reliably and safely for people. Southwest one eighty-fifth is also intersects with TV Highway, but has one of the, the area's biggest backups right where the max overcrossing runs across Southwest one eighty-fifth. And there's a huge backup there, often at peak commuter hours when the max line crosses. And we're going to build an overpassing over, an overcrossing over Southwest one eighty-fifth to manage that congestion there, and then a whole bunch of new sidewalk and bikeways and some major transit improvements to help the bus move quickly. Burnside Bridge, I talked about a little bit previously. We are investing in the bridge, which is obviously a very significant investment to help it be seismically ready in case of an earthquake. We're also investing in safety improvements up and down the entire corridor. Bus shelters, we heard really clearly from the folks who use Burnside and Barnes Road out in Washington County, they want bus shelters and they want streetlights so that they feel safe waiting for the bus and safe walking up and, up and down. And then there's some pretty significant transit improvements that'll, this will help be part of our rapid bus network as well. Highway two seventeen is something that all of us experience in, in all of its glory. And there's a whole bunch of investment happening on two seventeen right now. We got a couple hundred million dollars for it in the last, in the HB twenty seventeen. But the reality is we don't really know what the next set of improvements are. And that's particularly challenging because we can't just keep adding lanes to it because we don't have much more room. We would have to take away businesses and homes in Beaver Ten and in other parts of the region. So the question here really is what is next? How do we make two seventeen work? Move and move lots of people and lots of freight in a way that is effective? So this measure is going to help us answer that question. Similarly, ninety-nine W is, if anyone has driven it, drove it sort of pre-pandemic era, it had really significantly increased use on ninety-nine W, and a lot of safety issues as well. A lot of people are being hit and killed on ninety-nine W, people driving and people walking. And so this measure is going to look at, how do we, how do we help plan for the changing land use and really increase residential growth along ninety-nine W? And how do we figure out what, what that, what that corridor needs? In Clackamas County, there's a series of investments. I'll move some, through some of these a little bit more quickly, quickly, but I'll spend a little bit of time on some of the ones closer to Wilsonville. Oh, I didn't, I didn't put in the individual slides on this. I apologize. But McLaughlin, McLaughlin's going to be part of the rapid bus network for the region, helping move people from Oregon City all the way to downtown Portland quickly and reliably. And also helping plan to extend the light rail line, which is really exciting. Highway two twelve and Sunrise is a key freight need, helping move folks out from two oh five east where there's a whole bunch of industrial land. And this measure both, has a bunch of investment in two twelve itself to make it work for people driving and to make it safer. And then in the Sunrise Corridor, which is helping expand the freight capacity heading east-west. Highway forty-three, we're looking at a whole bunch of safety needs. This was a key priority for the city of West Lynn. And looking at how we make Highway forty-three work better, particularly where it intersects with two oh five. And then Clackamas to Columbia and one hundred and eighty-first, helping connect the Clackamas Town Center all the way up with Columbia Boulevard and North Portland. Those are two really emerging industrial areas with a whole bunch of residential people in between. And right now, the folks who live in between can't get to either of those residential or employment areas without hopping on two oh five. And we want to, we're actually building a new road to connect that so people can move through that whole area. And then Eighty-Second Avenue runs all the way from northeast Portland down into Clackamas County and investing in safety improvements and some key transit improvements. That will be part of our rapid bus network as well. These investments overall, they are about four billion dollars worth of corridor investments in the region. Like I said, that's going to create more than thirty-seven thousand jobs. And the thing about these jobs is they are living wage household jobs, ninety, about ninety-eight thousand dollars a year. So we are, we think that this is particularly in this moment, a critical part of this measure. It's going to help rebuild our economy at the same time as it's rebuilding our transportation system. And that's going to be really important for people around the region. In addition to the key corridor investments that we just talked about, the task force that Mayor Knapp served on and that others were involved with said, we also want to know that there's some ongoing funding and funding available for other parts of the region. So how do we think about making that available for everyone else? And they said, what if we do annual programs? And we want those to be sort of, they'll provide funding for all of us to, to access, to address some of the key needs that we've talked about in the region. And so one of the key things that came up was the need for safety everywhere. And that is in the Safe House, so there'll be a Safe House of Schools program, which provides investment right around schools to help kids and parents walk and bike. which provides investment right around schools to help kids and parents walk and bike to school safely. There's the Safety Hot Spots program, which looks at using the data we have in the region about where people are hit and killed, are being hit and killed on our roadways, and says, okay, what's the targeted safety investment we need here to help save lives? And comes in and does that spot treatment. The Regional Walking and Biking Connections Program is looking at off-street trail connections and bridges, like the French Prairie Bridge. How do we invest in those connections and help connect those networks? And then finally, the Revitalizing Main Streets program is a program that came up towards the end of the conversation, but it acknowledges that we have a lot of smaller downtowns through the region that are really important community centers. They're places where you want people to go and walk around and shop, and maybe get a coffee outside, so in a socially distanced way. But we want these to be parts of our community. And a lot of them need some investment in order to really play that role. They need to be safer, they need to have sidewalks that people can feel comfortable accessing. Maybe they need benches or flowers or ways for people to feel welcome and comfortable. In some places, they need shuttle systems. So how do we help invest in our smaller downtowns? They really become the sort of thriving commercial centers that they envision themselves being. The task force also said, we want to make sure that we are investing deeply to make, to make sure that we're supporting communities, that we are stabilizing communities, and that we're not contributing to displacement. And so this measure has a pretty big chunk of funding set aside for each of the corridors that are receiving investment to bring community members, business leaders who are along the corridor together and talk about what they need in order to thrive while these transportation improvements are being put in. Similarly, there is some funding to support the preservation of affordable housing along the corridors where these investments are happening. And then one of the things that we heard a lot from community members was wanting to support transit access for youth, and in particular, making sure that students and youth under 18 have free access to transit. So this measure is going to help support their access to transit. Finally, there's a bus electrification program, I should say, because I think I saw Dwight come in earlier. It's bus electrification for Trimestar and for SMART, it's supporting your plan of moving to compressed natural gas, CNG. So it will help both of those agencies move forward completely into their goal of low emission vehicle buses, which is very exciting. There's also a better bus program, which is going to help both Trimestar and SMART identify the locations where there are major reliability issues or delay issues, and figure out what sort of transportation improvements are needed to help address that delay. And that's just going to help the whole system work better, help the buses run on time, help them be a better option for people. And then finally, I talked about this a little bit before, but there's also a set of, a pot of money set aside to make sure that we are planning for the future as new corridors or new places pop up that have a lot of need, where there's a lot of growth, probably in 2030, some places that we aren't anticipating right now. Making sure that there's funding set aside to help them prepare for what comes next. The measure looks the way that it does and is shaped this way because of the really collaborative process that has gone into building it. And this is a photo of the task force that Mayor Knapp was kind enough to serve on. It was a 35-member task force with business leaders, elected leaders, and community leaders. And they met 23 times over 18 months to help provide feedback on everything in the measure, from what corridors to consider, to what type of project we should build on those corridors, to the programs that I talked about, to the revenue mechanisms and the oversight components that went into this. So they really helped develop, develop the measure from stem to stern. We also had local investment teams, which were representatives from, members of each county, about 10 to 12 members from each county, sat to provide feedback based on their lived experience, talking about, oh, I, you know, I drive this road all the time, and here's where the real problem is. And I don't think you really have thought through this project because it's addressing an issue that is only an issue a small part of the time. Or, actually, that's a great project, and that really would address the thing that I experienced. We wanted to make sure we were really connecting the planners and the engineers who are developing these projects with the people and the businesses that were experiencing them every day. In addition to that, we've done over 100 workshops around the region, getting feedback on the measure. And I think you guys are my 45th presentation in the last two months. So we've been going around, talking to a lot of folks about the measure and getting feedback and hearing from them. And then in addition to all that, I think we've had over 8,000 survey responses from people talking to us about what they like, what they wanted to see more of, what they wanted to see be a little bit different. And all that feedback has really shaped this measure in a way that is pretty different, I think, for a transportation measure in our region than for a process in our region. So that really is very exciting for us when we think about what this looks like now. So with that, let's invest in our future, let's get shovels in the ground, let's get people back to work, let's get moving. I'm going to unshare my screen, and then I'm happy to take any questions that folks have. I can keep sharing my screen if you would like, but then I think you can't see each other, right?
Yeah, not so well, so it's probably better, yeah.
Yeah. Why won't you let me do this? Sorry.
So to make all this happen, Tyler, we have to get this measure passed by the voters, right?
We do. So our council is intending to refer this measure in mid-July. We were originally hoping for a May referral, but with the pandemic, we had to slow things down and take a little more time to get feedback and do some of the engagement. So they're hoping to refer it in mid-July, it would go to the voters in November. And, yeah, this is, I will say, this is the first time that the region has really thought about a voter-based transportation measure. We've done an incredible job in the region bringing federal money in. We've done a pretty good job getting money at the state level. But it's very clear that those aren't reliable funding sources for us in the long term. And they have been really drying up in the last 10 years. I think Mayor Knapp's heard more than his fair share of depressing financial statements about the feds. And we've seen some of our partner regions around the country, whether it's Seattle, whether it's LA, whether it's Phoenix, Arizona, whether it's Salt Lake City, whether it's Indianapolis, undertake these voter initiatives really successfully. And it requires you to think a little bit differently. You have to really have a lot of conversations with voters and understand where they are and what they want. But if you're able to do it, it's a really important way of bringing investment into your transportation system and also being really responsive to the public.
Can you make a brief comment about what funding mechanism? Or has that been finally determined so people kind of know what, you know, where the money will come from?
Yeah, this is where we often say, this is the sort of the Winston Churchill democracy moment, where democracy is the worst form of government except for all the other forms. There's no perfect funding mechanism either. But our council has asked us to look at payroll tax with an exemption for small businesses, and then a vehicle reg fee. And we heard pretty clearly from folks throughout the process that the property tax is over-tapped, and no one really wanted us to think about the property tax. And, and the business community has been involved in these conversations the whole time, and I think really understands the link between transportation and economic growth, and is more open to using a business tax in this context.
So council, questions? Councilor Akervall.
I wonder what the, the view or the ideas are. For instance, you talked about some of the smaller spot projects, like the Main Street program. I wonder how that money might be distributed, if there's a concept, or like, will it be grants, competitive grants that people or different communities need to apply for? Or what the opportunities there would look like?
That is a great question. For most of them, we are looking at a competitive grant-type program, sort of on an every-three-year basis. And partly, that's from a voter perspective. It's a lot easier to manage accountability and oversight in that context. And also, we heard a lot from our communities that like, we might not be ready in three years. You know, some folks who are like, we're ready to go right now, we want it. And other folks who are like, we might not be ready in three years, but we would be ready in six, or we would be ready in nine. So they sort of want to be able to participate on the time schedule that makes sense for them. I would say the major exception to that is the bus of electrification slash CNG program, where we will just have a contract with SMART and with Trimestar, but we will just basically write them a check on an ongoing basis in order to enable that fleet turnover.
Other questions or comments? Well, maybe not right now, Ms. Frisbee, I appreciate your time.
Mayor Knapp.
Clearly know your material after presenting it for you.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir. Counselor West, I didn't see a question, a hand up.
I know, it's, it's, um, quick question. When you are proposing payroll taxes, are those, I know they can, they're either paid by the employee or they're paid by the business. So what type of payroll taxes are we looking at? Are we looking at the employee's wages or taxes paid by the employer?
That's a great question. We're looking at taxes paid by the employer.
And have we had updated considerations of how the business community now thinks after the economy, the high unemployment rates, the cat tax still coming down the bike? The, I mean, we're, you know, the, we've had an onslaught of new taxes on, on the backs of like one specific. It just seems like it's often on the backs of one specific part of the population that are continually going to the well, too. And, you know, much of them, and Monmouth County can't even open right now, and the biggest county, they haven't been opened. So have we considered their desire to pay an additional tax again during this climate?
Yeah, we, we are having, we've been having conversations with them throughout this whole process. And obviously, the climate is different than it was in January. These taxes wouldn't be levied until 2022. So I think a lot of businesses feel, hope, believe that the economy will be in a much better place by then, particularly since we'll actually bond off that future revenue. So we'll be able to provide jobs before then, and we'll start a lot of this work before then. So with, without, you know, with a delayed collection on the taxes, I think folks are more comfortable with it. And our council is also looking at phasing in and slowly ramping up a tax rate to help address that issue. And that, and then our council is very clear that a small business exemption is critical to them. So businesses under 25 employees wouldn't see a tax.
So any business, you classify small business not by revenue, you classify it by size of, how many employees they have?
That's how the state classifies it, yeah, so we're following.
That's how the state does, okay, okay.
So I think it's worth noting that our larger businesses that we're really talking to about helping to support this, this whole concept are those that frequently have the most challenges in moving their product to market, in accessing their customer base, in engaging in interstate commerce, all those things. Many, many of them are acutely aware of the deficiencies in our transportation system affect their ability to function effectively and profitably. And that includes enabling their employees to get to work and home on a, on a timetable that you know ahead of time. I know there's been a lot of dialogue with some of the larger business groups in the region, Portland Business Clients, and I think some others, that have, you know, while no one is enthusiastic about, you know, paying more taxes, there's, there's a, there's a benefit of those attacks that is perceived by many of the business community in this particular case, for this particular proposal. And we're all hopeful that is, is what the outcome would be, that the companies would see a genuine improvement after a few years when we start actually getting some of these corridors and connections improved beyond what they've been. Other questions? Well, I'm not seeing any more right now. So thank you so much for joining us this evening. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more as this moves forward here this summer and this fall.
You will. Thank you so much for having me. I'll put my email in the chat in case anyone has any follow-up questions. And also the website where you can read about the plan and learn more in case you're interested. But thank you all so much for having me.
Thank you. Now, we'll see you. Okay. Mr. Cosgrove, have we had our other communications from Community Sharing in touch with us, not?
No.
Have not, okay. Well, then we should move forward to our Citizen Input and Community Announcement section, which is an opportunity for visitors to address the council on things that are not on the agenda. Also a time to address things that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a formal public hearing. And we do have a couple of formal public hearings tonight on certain topics. Staff and council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during Citizens Input, either before the meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. We do ask people to contain their comments to about three minutes. Do we have members of the public that are wanting to speak at this point?
Yes, we do, Your Honor.
Okay. These would be on topics other than our public hearings.
Correct.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and other council members. My name is Cassandra Edwards. I'm a resident of Wilsonville.
Can we ask for a little more volume by getting closer to the microphone, please?
Can you hear me now?
A little better, yeah.
Is it okay if I take my mask off so you can hear me? Or do you still want me to have my mask on? I probably could come through better.
Hang on a second, we'll, we'll hook you up with amplification.
Okay, thank you.
You're our first public comment in a while, so.
Really?
We'll extend the time.
Interesting. Can you hear me now?
Is that better?
I think that's better. Please try.
Okay, I will get as close to the microphone as possible. Again, my name is Cassandra Edwards. I'm a resident here in Wilsonville. I'm here with my family, Jay Edwards and my son Miles, as well as my neighbor, Lucho. And I'm, we're all coming to you today as concerned citizens, African-American citizens, about the tragic events that have happened in the country over the past several weeks. These types of things have been going on for a very long time. We've just been able to video, record them with our phones. I am very disappointed, honestly, that the topic of policing and protecting African-Americans in this community is not on the agenda. With so much going on right now, I would expect that every city council across different cities in the country would be talking about this. My son, who is 14 years old, will be driving in a couple of years. And as good of a citizen as he is, and as good of a boy as he is, the reality is, is that he's going to encounter the police at some time in his life, probably sooner than later, given the reality of what's happening in this country. And so I'm here particularly because I'm trying to protect my son and make sure that he stays alive and he gets to go to college, he gets to have a career, he gets to have a family of his own. But right now, the police departments across this country, there is an assault on black people by the police. And we saw that very vividly with the killing of George Floyd. And then we're hearing about so many others that have happened in this country. So my ask of this council, I have a couple of questions. What are we doing as far as discussions with the community on how we're going to protect black residents of Wilsonville? There aren't that many of us, from what I see, but we are here. The few of us that are here, we are here. And we need to know that the city council is taking steps to protect our lives. That should be an absolute highest priority right now of this council. My second question is, have we challenged our police department on their policing practices? My husband sent out an email to Mayor Knapp recently, and we appreciate the quick response that you gave to us, Mayor Knapp, as well as the, I believe it's the Clackamas Police Chief, or Wilson, sorry. or Wilson, sorry, Wilsonville Police Chief, with a litany of practices that highlighted and addressed the questions that he had. And I'm sure there are plenty of police departments across this country that on paper have policies that make sense, that essentially say that we are protecting citizens within our community. And the outcomes that we always look for in the end is that people come out alive. But that is not the case for African-Americans in this country. We've seen it with our own eyes. So my question is, how are we challenging our police department with policing practices? Who is holding them accountable to the practices that are in place? Who is holding police officers that have troubled past and a history, are we holding these people accountable? Because the reality is, is that a lot of deaths, the tragic deaths that have happened to African-American have come at the hands of police officers who have disciplinary issues, who have histories of inflicting excessive force onto African-American citizens. And nothing was done about it. Okay? The guy who killed, and I'm not even going to give him the honor of saying his name. The guy who killed beloved George Floyd, who took him away from his family, his daughters, his sons, brothers, friends, had a history, a troubling history of excessive force, and nothing was done about it. So I need to know that my family, as long as we're living here in Wilsonville, we're going to be protected, that if I have an encounter with the police, which for years I thought I'd never have an encounter with the police, I'm a law-abiding citizen, I was raised right, my mother and my father taught me to respect law enforcement. But I know the reality of this country right now, I'm likely to have an encounter with the police, and it could be very fatal for me. If I flinch, or if I have an inflection in my voice that doesn't come across right to the police officer, that could mean death. And for many of you in this room, you don't have to think about it because you're white. We do. Our skin color has been criminalized in this country, and we have to do something about it. The systems that exist, not black people, the systems that exist have to do something about it. The dismantling of racism needs to come from the systems that are in place that do not serve black citizens. My third question is, have we even thought about how do we engage our police community with the African-American community that would facilitate respect and care in an exchange that allows them to see us in a different light? That needs to happen with this council. You guys have a direct connection to the police department, the police chief, you have, you have a relationship there. That needs to be facilitated. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna end this by telling you a little bit of a story about my son. My son is on the autism spectrum, okay? He's a very high-functioning autistic child, which will allow him to do a lot of the things that other typically developing kids will do in their lives: drive, get a job, go to school, okay? But as an autistic child, he does have some behaviors that could be construed as maybe aggressive, or maybe being non-cooperative if he got pulled over by the police. That could mean death for him. That would be, of course, devastating. To lose a child would be devastating for any of us, no matter what color your skin is, devastating. I am here because I don't want to lose my son, and I need this council to take steps that will address that and will bring some sense of peace to the black community, to black residents in Wilsonville, that says, we care about your existence and we're going to do something about it as much as we possibly can. That's in our power to make sure that our police department is protecting every citizen in a fair way, and that every encounter that they have is not an outcome that results in death. So I thank you for allowing me to speak, and I will be back. I will be participating in these council meetings because I need to feel as though that the community that I'm living in cares about every family, but particularly black residents, because we are under assault at this moment. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Edwards. I appreciate your comments. I did correspond with your husband, I think, and you raised questions that clearly do not have easy and bad answers and rightly urge us toward more consideration and more dialogue. We did have a, a good exchange a couple of weeks ago with the council and the chief of police and asked some of the questions about how, what protocols are and how it works. We need to have more discussion. I think that the suggestion that some kind of a public meeting with people of color and our local authorities and our elected officials together would be one potentially beneficial thing that we could do. It's within the realm of, of, you know, things that are possible, I think, for us at the, at the level we operate at, and we should look at doing that. The council not, at this point, have answers to all of your questions. I think that we, as not people of color, have been on a steep learning curve here in the last few weeks, and even those of us who have felt we were aware have discovered ways in which we have not been. And so I think that that is a legitimate, I think it's a legitimate kind of a question to say, well, what are we going to do with this increased awareness? So while I don't have an answer for you, I think that we, right now, I think that we do have this increased awareness, and we've had some dialogue between us individually and our city staff about how we might pursue increasing our collective awareness and commitment to the kind of change that I hear you asking about. So while I don't have a real final answer that, that you would find satisfying right now, I think that my perception is that all of the council is committed to moving in the direction that you're, you're talking about. So I can't commit that we're not done and we're not ignoring. We need to figure out, you know, the next steps and what the steps are after that. So thank you. Do we have other speakers?
Mayor Nap, Representative Courtney Neron would like to speak.
Yes.
Could you bring her in?
Representative Neron, good evening.
Hey, I did it. All right. Hello, everyone. I wanted to check in with you all and let you know I've been listening to this last, the last few minutes, the last half hour or so of council, and thank you for the meeting. And I'm here to testify on behalf of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, but before I do, I wanted to, well, I should introduce myself. I'm the state representative for Wilsonville and have the honor of serving our city and representing our city in Salem. And, but before I begin talking about the housing comments I wanted to make, I wanted to acknowledge the previous speaker's concerns and, you know, as part of the fact that this is a really painful time in our society and our community is calling for social and racial justice, wanted to just to kind of reassure that there are some policies being considered at the state level in regards to social and racial justice and police accountability. We are still crafting language and working on some of the finer details, and we have specific people doing that work that we will be considering. But we do feel very compelled to take that seriously, and we'll be meeting hopefully in a special session quite soon to address some of the changes that our communities are calling for, included in some of the concepts that we're considering at a statewide level. And we do need action at all levels of government, but at the state level, we're talking about banning chokeholds, addressing officer adjudication issues, where sometimes in adjudication, there's a lessening of a consequence after an officer has used excessive force or misbehaved in some way. We're talking about creating a police database, accountability database, and for any excessive use of force, having our attorney general do an independent review. And I appreciate the, the previous speaker's comments about having community conversations. I just want to let you all know that I would be happy to participate in those community council conversations, as well as somebody that really wants to make sure that I'm learning from our community as what, what are we being called to act upon and improve in our policies. We are considering a bunch of, obviously, COVID pandemic-related policies as well. But in regards to the previous speakers, I thought I would start by acknowledging that there is work at the state level as well, but, but I'm happy to be involved in the, the city-level work that you all are doing as well. So, and so just in terms of the, the social and racial justice work that we do need to do, it definitely applies to so many areas. There's an intersection of a lot of issues, whether it's healthcare or education. And so I know you guys are working on housing, so I prepared some remarks to talk about just how important it is that we focus on equity in housing as well. So I've been paying attention to the conversation in Wilsonville regarding affordable and equitable housing solutions. And as we know, the ability to afford housing is in a statewide crisis. And as policymakers, it's essential that we examine both long-held systemic inequities and new planning proposals with an understanding of who has been left out, who is currently impacted, and who will be affected by the policies we implement in the future. I'm especially grateful that Wilsonville is being very intentional in applying an equity lens to this work so that our town can work to reduce any disparities that disadvantage already vulnerable community members. And I think about the conversations that I've had with Wilsonville residents who are making really difficult decisions about paying for rent or food or medicine each month, and others who need to be near public transportation, but when the cost of rent rises, they're pushed out of our community and farther from the transportation resources they rely on to get to work and the grocery store and places that they need to go. In recent years, the Oregon Legislature has sought to provide additional funding and policy changes to support approaches to increasing the supply of affordable housing and identify the low-inventory kinds of housing that, when provided, can allow for upward housing mobility and allow more people to move into positions of homeownership. And when I hear about how few beds there are in Clackamas County for people experiencing homelessness, or how many students in our own school district are experiencing homelessness, I conclude that we all need to be a part of asking ourselves what we can do to be part of the solution. So I'm here to let you know that I want to work with you, and, you know, it's exciting as well that there are regional partners ready to support the work outlined in the city's housing equity proposal. But truly, the reality is, we all have to work together to ensure we're providing the support our communities need to thrive. And so as your state representative, I'll be listening for Wilsonville's solutions and looking forward to hearing the community's further feedback and ideas on how to best respond to the housing crisis in Oregon. Together, we can plan for a fair and inclusive housing system for our region that serves individuals and families at all income levels. So thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you so much. Would you like your testimony to be recorded on the public hearing portion of the For Housing Strategic Plan hearing?
Oh, is that tonight as well?
Yes.
I didn't see it on the agenda, so I thought I would raise my hand for this. Sure, absolutely.
All right. Well, I didn't want to stop you early on a roll there, but it seems like your comments might be appropriate if you are wanting to have testimony recorded as part of the testimony on the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan also.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate this.
Thank you so much.
And are there any questions that I can answer while I'm here?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Neron?
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Rep. Neron, is, is anybody at the legislature looking at qualified immunity as an issue that the state would be interested in taking up? Some cities and states.
I have heard people talking about it, and I can follow up with you on where that conversation is. So I'll write that down, and I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Counselor West, question?
Yeah, thank you. So Brian, you just asked one of my questions, but the other question is, Courtney, we talked about a couple of things on the phone, and I still owe you an email. But one of the things we talked about on the phone was the state looking at the contracts and maybe looking at for state police or under the jurisdictions of body cameras so that we can make sure that officers are following policy, and we can also look at making sure that if people are being victimized by police brutality, we have evidence of that. And then if that's been, if that's come up. And then anything around the union contracts that protects bad actors beyond just adjudication process, do you have any more details about looking at union contracts that are looking to protect officers from appropriate discipline, discharge, or accountability, and, and looking if we, our contracts are not protecting the people that they're supposed to be serving?
I absolutely want to work with you on that. I share your concern about body cameras, and I believe we do need an emphasis on that statewide. So, and then the, the other question, let's follow up and, and we can talk more about that. I definitely want to make sure that we're engaging in that conversation, but, but, yeah, let's definitely, let's talk more about that. Send me the email, and we'll, we'll have another phone call conversation soon, okay?
Will do.
Thank you.
Representative, on that same topic, you and I have talked a little bit previously also, around the country, the rationales that I hear for, oh, you can't have, police have body cameras on all the time, run the gauntlet from the cost is too high to there's personal privacy issues when police might enter a domestic disturbance situation or someone else, and camera footage becomes public record, and you wouldn't want to do that. I mean, you have a whole range of, of different things. What strikes me is that they seem to be more in the line of excuses because there are departments across the country that are using body cameras, and each of those departments must be dealing with these questions in some way. They don't seem to be hurdles that cannot be surmounted, and it would seem like state action might be the most appropriate way in addressing some of those reasons for not having authorities have body cameras be required.
I agree with you. I feel like we need to really make sure that we are, well, actually, I think, I think we need to make sure we're engaging our community in what they, their expectation is. But the day that I saw the video of George Floyd, I called our chief, our police chief, and talked to him and was, you know, heard those very same talking points about, you know, concern about cost, concern about privacy. I learned that there are data needs in terms of IT specialists and being able to blur faces when a public records request happens. So I learned a lot. I do know that Beaverton, or I've heard that Beaverton has a requirement that their officers wear body cameras, and I'm happy to, to be talking about this at the state level as well. So. wear body cameras, and I'm happy to be talking about this at the state level as well. So, yeah, we can continue this conversation. As far as I know, not in our special session, which would be called immediately to take action on consensus items, where we do know that there is support, general support for special session concepts, but we can, we need ongoing work in this area. For the 2021 session, we'll start in January, and we'll be building some more complex or nuanced or new topics. But a lot of the policies that we'll be addressing in the special session have either been clearly demanded and don't have necessarily any pushback, or they've already been vetted and voted on. For example, the police adjudication bill has been voted on in the Senate twice and just hasn't had a chance to make it through the House in our past session. So, we definitely need to make sure that we get certain pieces of policy that have been well-vetted by our committee process through as soon as possible, as well as things like the ban on chokeholds that we can see that there's a call for it, we know we can take action. I believe there's another bill or part of the bill package that would address the use of tear gas and certain methods of certain current tools, but the policies, again, are kind of still in flux, and I believe in the next week or so, I'll be able to see those policies come out. But I'd be happy to work with our city and anybody, any community members that want to talk to me about it. My email address is rep.courtneyneon@oregonlegislature.gov, and happy to field those questions and concerns from our community, from you all, anytime. I always appreciate our conversations.
Thank you very much.
I think I've seen someone raise their hand up, but it looks frozen.
That's Counselor West. He's had his hand up for the last 10 minutes, but I don't think that's a good picture yet. Counselor Linvo.
Okay. Representative Neron, I'm happy to see you here and glad that you're here and giving us your thoughts about both of these topics. I think there's one other area that I think we could use some help from the state, and that has to do with the DPSST Academy, the Police Academy, and the curriculum and some of the screening that's done perhaps for people who are entering into that academy. I think a lot of this, you know, there is a thought, there are two schools of thought in terms of being able to educate service providers on those kinds of skills that they need to be able to deal compassionately with the public, and that is people of color as well as persons with disabilities. There are all numbers of those things. And a lot of it starts in training, and it ends with who gets graduated and who does not get graduated. And I can tell you, as a nursing educator for a long, long time, there were a number of students that I had that I thought if I had to wake up from surgery and anesthesia and find that student, former student standing over me, I would be frightened. And so, I think there are issues that really need to start way back at training, and I think the curriculum needs to have some overhauling as well and some requirements, particularly from the state, that has to do with not just de-escalation, but it has to do with equity, equality, issues of dealing with persons of color, and it goes beyond the concept of profiling. And we don't like to talk too much about profiling, but when we try and adjudicate behavior by body cams and fear, you know, we would like to start at the beginning and have people who are in law enforcement who are the people we really want. The other idea, the other concern that I have has to do with, has to do with what we do with officers that are under stress, because a lot of what happens in terms of the knee-jerk, as we saw with this last shooting that happened, and the officer saying the adrenaline is still running, bad decisions get made. But physicians and nurses and EMTs and a lot of other providers, service providers, deal with high-stress situations as well, and they don't go ballistic. So, there are ways, I think, to deal with that, and I think those are other issues, and maybe focusing on it from a situation of saying, we need to have the ability for these people to be taken out of the environment and get some treatment and get some help. So, thank you for being here.
Absolutely. I really want to echo a lot of what you just said, and in my conversations with both Chief Gross and our sheriff-elect, Angela Vandenberg, and as well, I called our current sheriff, Roberts, for conversations about the response and what they feel is needed. They really wanted to underline how lucky they feel in the Clackamas County Force to be an agency that does monthly de-escalation training, that is sought out by top officers, but they do emphasize as well that they try to select the best of the best for Clackamas County. And now, I'll just share that I feel that we need to make sure we're holding all of our officers to that same standard, and so figuring out how we can make sure that our officers have all of the training that they need, like you said, for our BIPOC community and our disability community and our mental health community as well. When somebody needs extra support, the real value of de-escalation, empathy, connecting is so essential. So, we do have behavioral specialists that go out with a lot of the officers and behavioral teams of people, but there's so much room for improvement. It doesn't mean we're immune from not, from having these conversations of how can we improve, where do we have systemic inequities? So, really, want to just underline again that I'm happy to be a part of the conversations that we're having at the policymaking level, and I really appreciated how many of our community members are letting us know, sharing their experiences, that this is an imperfect system that we have, even in our own community, and that there's a lot of room for improvement. So, making sure that we listen to everybody and intentionally respond, trying to address the concerns that we've heard tonight from the speaker before me, as well as the speakers at the events that we've been having in various communities around my district, around the Portland metro area, around the world, really. There's really a calling for some examination, a reckoning of what do we do currently that systemically, you know, holds people in certain positions, and how do we, you know, reexamine and create a new, healthier normal moving forward and rebuild trust? That's one thing that I know Sheriff Roberts even talked about, is wanting to make sure that we were rebuilding trust, and our community members want to trust the people charged with keeping them safe. And so, I think that those community conversations that we've talked about earlier tonight are essential. I think I'll stop there, but yes, happy to continue these conversations as they're scheduled.
Thank you. Counselor Lehan, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just was going to throw in here, I insist that the topic, of course, that we could spend several hours more this evening discussing, but I was glad that you brought up the mental health issues, because since we legislated our way out of the mental health business for the most part, we have that to deal with in the community, and it has fallen largely to law enforcement, and they were ill-prepared. Now, I do believe Clackamas County is better prepared than most police departments, but it's still a little bit outside their wheelhouse. The other piece that you can't ignore here is the criminal justice system and the prosecutor's office, not the prosecutor's office, but also the defense attorney, the public defender's office, and whether they are so overloaded that they can't possibly give decent service to a client under them. There are so many things wrong in the criminal justice system that feed into it, that you can't look at just what the police department's doing and not look at the criminal justice system and the mental health system in tandem. Anyway, long, long topic.
Oh, I really appreciate those comments, too, and really removing silos and finding all the places that we really need to talk about, the intersections of issues is really essential right now. So, and I truly want us to be doing a better job in Oregon in our response to individuals who need mental health support. So, that's definitely an area that I'm personally focusing on. At this time, I'm focusing on it actually in the education, in the realm of education, given in light of COVID, but also just mental health in general in our education system and how we can do a better job there. So, I'll be leading a work group for mental health and education, and we'll hopefully be talking about how we can make and preserve strategic investments, given the upcoming budget that we're facing. We've got to make sure that we, if we can do anything, what must we do? And there's so much work to do in the realm of mental health. But you're right about talking about it as, you know, system-wide, DOC, our defense attorneys, there is an overload, and so often, our prisons, our Department of Corrections are addressing serious mental health concerns. Is that really the place for someone with a mental illness? Not necessarily. So, how can we do better for our communities and for vulnerable individuals in our care? Thanks, you guys.
Well, thank you, Representative. I'm sure we'll have more dialogue. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I won't be able to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but I'll watch it later, and I really appreciate you all and look forward to our conversations this month.
Counselor Acrival didn't get her comment in here, so maybe she...
I can say, I can say. That's okay. I think we're all going to, we're melding into some of our counselor comments as well, and I think, you know, that makes sense and it's good. I, you know, came to our meeting tonight, I wanted to, I'm glad that we're getting to have this conversation with you, but also specifically to have the conversation with the community and hear their thoughts this evening, because I think that's really important. It feels like a lot has happened since our last meeting on June 1st, where, you know, we were able to make some discussion at that meeting as well, but this is an ongoing conversation, as I think we've all recognized, tonight as well. And I see counsel and many members of our community reflecting, taking a moment to think, to listen, to ask questions that we need to bring out there, and myself included in trying to digest this and ask the questions that will be fruitful in this moment. I want to be clear for my own perspective, I guess. In my view, I say that Black Lives Matter, and they deserve to thrive in our community. And I recognize, we have heard tonight, there is pain felt by many from a long history of unjust events, and some of them we have seen recorded on cellphone footage, and some of them we have not, and all of those stories hold value. I recognize that as a white person, I have a different set of privileges than many in our community, and there is systemic racism rooted in our culture, and this is unjust, and I want to be part of the change, and I'm hearing from counsel and many community members that they want to be part of this change. I appreciate some of the specific suggestions and ideas, you know, that we've been passing around tonight. I especially liked the third question from our community member sharing this evening about how can we facilitate conversations with the Black community in Wilsonville and our police, and how can we be part of that and engage in that, and what is our responsibility in that? I also, I asked staff, and I want to continue to look at specifically where we fall or where we stand in our kind of current environment or landscape in regards to maybe some of the categories of Campaign Zero that they've identified, and a lot of our suggestions and conversations tonight is also touching on some of those points, and I'd like to have that be part of our information that's available to the public, too, possibly in city manager reports that we get or something like this, so we can all be working off of some of this kind of common data and information. I think there's a lot of good suggestions tonight, and I think one of the other ideas that I've had, too, is ongoing training, because this is ongoing work, both for our police force, but also all of our public leaders. I think that's an important facet in continuing with this. So, I really, I want to engage in this. I want to engage with counsel and our community. I want to work together on this, and so, thank you all for adding to this conversation and also for listening. A special thanks to our community member for coming and sharing tonight.
All right. Thank you so much, Representative. I think that we'll let that stand at that point for right now, but clearly, we have next steps to define.
Thank you so much. And Counselor Acrival, I really appreciate your sentiments that you just expressed, and there are so many who share those sentiments, and we're ready to continue listening and learning and doing the work and really trying to analyze how we can do better and how we can be part of the solution going forward. So, thank you all for having me, and I look forward to connecting with you ongoing.
Thank you much.
Right, thanks.
So, very good discussion, and I do appreciate the input from Ms. Edwards on the, from the citizen side of things and the Black citizen side of things, I guess, is the correct. We now have counselor comments. We've spent quite a bit of time on this topic, but maybe we could ask you to keep your counselor comments reasonably brief or focused, if we could. I'll ask Counselor President Acrival first.
And I can pass at this point, too. That's fine, thank you.
I wanted to be sure if staff didn't have anybody else waiting to speak. I didn't ask again.
Nope, that's all we have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, and so you didn't have anything else additional you needed to broach for tonight, right now, Counselor Acrival?
Yeah, that's correct. I think we can move along with our agenda, but thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Counselor Lehan?
Yes, I just wanted to say that today, we got the official notice that we were approved for a grant from, a grant from the State Parks Department and for new monuments for jet... Jesse Boone, his wife, and three or four of his children, who are in unmarked graves in the Butteville Cemetery. So we will still be needing to raise some match money for that, but we got a $2,500 grant to do those monuments. And as most people understand, there's the Boone Bridge, there's Boone's Ferry Road, there's Boone's Ferry, there's, there are a lot of things that are named after Jesse Boone, and yet he is not, his grave is not marked anywhere. So I think this is a joint, has been a joint project with the Butteville Pioneer Cemetery Association and the Wilsonville Boone's Ferry Historical Society. So both sides of the river have been working on this for about a year, and it probably won't get done until later in the fall, but just wanted to let you know it is moving.
Thank you very much. Counselor West?
How about now, can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Okay, good, thank you. I'll be super brief, since we've already had a lot of conversations leading up to this already. I wasn't able to make it to the march, but I was, we thought, I'm guessing around 200 people show up and peacefully protest, and he's the first man to write to speak to something that's kind of gripping the nation right now. And there was a smaller Flag Day gathering that I attended at the Korean War Memorial just yesterday on Flag Day, and trying to find those symbols that speak to our higher ideals and values as Americans that unite all of us together as one, regardless of creed, background, orientation, or all the rest. So it was a really wonderful opportunity to see citizens galvanize together for things that matter, and remember those important symbols that bind us together regardless of what our different belief systems and where we come from. So we have also the Fourth of July coming up, celebrating our independence, and I'm looking forward to that holiday also. And I also had the opportunity to meet with some, the Wilsonville Alliance for an Inclusive Community, that was wonderful, and continuing just to reach out and have those conversations behind the scenes with different electeds and the members of this council on how we can be creative and innovative on moving forward as a community and making sure that we are taking care of one another. So I don't know how much more to add this week than that, we've already said a ton, and we're getting late into the evening, we still got a full agenda. So with that, I will pass it on to the next counselor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Linville?
Well, I just have two items. The first one, I really want to thank Ms. Edwards for taking the time to come to speak to us tonight. And I think it's especially important that she brought her family with her, and I appreciate that. And I want to say personally to you that we want to hear from you. Your coming to see us at council and keeping this issue in front of us is not, is exactly what we need to have you and the rest of our community do. I know that a three-minute time with us in this citizens' comment area is not probably the best format, and it's not where we're going to hear and be able to respond and do the kinds of things that need to be done. But we want to see you, and so I think it's good, it's good that you are here. And it is very disheartening to me that you, you present, in your voice, in your tone of voice, and in your, and in your presence, this fear of driving while black. And I think that is an absolute real fear and a real concern, and it breaks my heart that you and other members of our Black citizens feel that. You should not have to have that experience. And I'm going to reiterate what I said at our last council meeting, because I think it is critical that we hear. And Mayor, I applaud you for making those comments about creating some kind of a forum that we can bring our citizens together and our law enforcement, and that we can just listen and hear the stories and hear the reality of what our citizens are feeling and experiencing. So that is the first step that I think we need to take as a concrete step. The second one is, out of that, I think we need to develop specific strategies. It's not good enough to just say, "We don't like this, it's a terrible thing that happens, we support the protests." It's a lot more than that. You know, if someone gets stopped, I don't get stopped probably because I have a little hole in my taillight, but other people who don't have the same color of my skin do. And I'm not saying that happens in Wilsonville, but I think that happens, and it's not unusual. And then I, so I think we need to develop specific strategies and an action plan so that we keep, we have oversight over what's going on. We know what the profiling report looks like, and we can ask that that gets separated out for Wilsonville versus all of Clackamas County. And I think we need to see that. We need to at least have our city manager be looking at that on a regular basis. We need to make sure that we, that either through our city manager and in cooperation with the chief, that we are looking at excessive use of force incidents on a regular basis and figuring out what's happening. And then we need to keep working until all of our citizens say, "We feel great, we feel fine, we feel good living in this community and it's safe." And I think we just have a long way to go. The second one I wanted to just make a mention about is, again, I have concerns about our river. And we now have another application that is trying to allow the use of surfing those large surfing boards, surfing boats, to create those wakes that allow surfers to surf in our river. And it's eroding our citizens' property. And so I'm encouraging our citizens to get engaged with this and go to the River Keepers' website and get involved, write letters. We need to, we need to make sure that we protect both the environment of the river bank and the riverbed, but also the property of our citizens who live along the river. And that, those are my comments for tonight. So thank you, Ms. Edwards, for coming.
And thank you, Counselor Linville. That brings us to our consent agenda, and we have multiple items on consent. If we could ask for that to be read, please.
Certainly. Just quickly, on the first consent agenda item, I noticed there's a Scrivener's error, there's a reference to a section 28 and a 29. They should be the same, so with your permission, when this is over, I'll work with the city recorder to fix the section so that it's correct. But that being said, that's in Resolution Number 2814, and I'll just go ahead and read them then. Resolution Number 2814, a resolution adopting the canvas of votes of the May 19, 2020 primary election and amending the Wilsonville Charter. Resolution Number 2819, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing support grant agreement with Wilsonville Community Sharing. Resolution Number 2825, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Fiscal Year 2020/21 Five-Year Action Plan and Annual One-Year Implementation Plan for the Wilsonville Tourism Development Strategy.
Thank you. Counsel, is there a motion on consent on the three items defined as read?
Your Honor, I move to approve consent agenda as read.
Thank you. Counselor West, is there a second?
Your Honor, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Linville. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Bringing us to New Business, Resolution 2822.
Resolution Number 2822, a resolution of the Wilsonville City Council adopting the South Metro Area Regional Transit Smart Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan.
We having a staff report? Okay.
Well, we have a staff report in the, that was in the packet. I don't know how much of a presentation Mr. Breshear has, but we did talk about this at the last meeting. I think he's here to answer any questions.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am Dwight Breshear, your Transit Director. And I'm joined this evening with Eric Loomis, the Operations Manager. And we are here to answer any questions that you might have. As you know, we are and have been a direct recipient of the FTA. We receive quite a bit of funding for capital generally through the FTA. And every now and then, they come out with a set of new requirements. And in this case, every agency that is a direct recipient or receives any type of money from the Federal Transit Administration is required to put together a Public Transit Agency Safety Plan. And so Eric Loomis and the rest of the team have been working with a consultant that was hired by ODOT. And of course, you've had a draft of this plan now for about three weeks, give or take. And we are proud of the work that went into this plan. I think we've been doing most of what is contained in this plan, at least for the three and a half years that I have been here. And I think this plan just solidifies a safety culture that SMART has established, that SMART continues to work by, making sure that all of our employees and our vendors, anybody that we come in contact with, whether on our vehicles or at our facilities, are safe and are behaving in a safe fashion. So we have a very good safety record, and I think this will only make that record that much better as we move forward. So again, we are here, we ask that this plan be adopted, and it's important to keep in mind that this is a living document. We will be now back before you every year with adjustments, amendments, changes to that document, asking for your approval and adoption of the plan. So this is not a one-time, one-time deal. It's an ongoing deal. Safety should be an ongoing endeavor, and it will be, and it has been, at SMART. So we are here to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Breshear. Counsel, questions? Counselor Acravall?
Thank you. Yes, I appreciated our last discussion about this plan as well, and the careful thought that you have put into it. And I think it's a really good framework for us to work forward to, but I also liked hearing your comments tonight about this is something that we will continue to maybe reassess, or it will evolve as needed as that becomes clear. And that was one of my questions, was how does this look going forward? Is it something that, you know, included in like the city manager's report, like we get an annual report? Or will we have a dialogue, conversation annually? Or will it kind of be as needed if there's changes? And if it's not, if there aren't changes, then it would just be information that's distributed to us? But I think it's good to keep an eye on the information that the framework presents and kind of aggregates.
Well, I certainly will commit myself and the team to attending a work session occasionally. I know the work sessions are always busy, but I think this is that important, that we can come back occasionally, give the council updates on outcomes, the things that we've tracked. One of the first things Eric has talked about doing is running this particular pandemic through the matrix, see how we're doing compared to what the plan would require us to do and what we're actually doing. That'll be a good exercise for the entire team, because we put a lot of effort, as you know, into ensuring the safety of our drivers, our customers during this pandemic, and I think we've done a great job. And I think this plan, being able to put it through the matrix, will hopefully support the work that we've done, but it'll also show us if we've missed anything. So I think it's, you know, I think this is a win-win for the city, I think it's a win-win for SMART. And I think getting this adopted at this point puts us way ahead of the game, probably ahead of most agencies across this country, because, as you know, it's not due until December 31st. But I like to be early if I can, so.
It's a great idea. Thank you, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? I'm not seeing any other requests at this point, so if--
I move to approve Resolution Number 2822.
Thank you. Motion from Counselor Lehan, is there a second?
All seconds.
Thank you. Second from Counselor Acravall. Discussion needed? If not, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2822? Please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. I have five votes in favor, no opposition then. Thank you very much. That is your plan, Mr. Breshear.
Well, thank you all, I appreciate it. And we will change the S in SMART to safety now, so it's going to be safety. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. That brings us then to Resolution 2824.
Your Honor, I'm going to read Resolution 2824 and 2826 together because they're related, you'll vote on them separately. But I'm also going to note for the record, when I read Resolution Number 2824, it's not going to sound exactly like it looks on your agenda, I've gotten an updated wording for it. So just so you're not confused, looking at the agenda and listening to what I read. So Resolution Number 2824, a resolution adopting collective bargaining agreement between the City of Wilsonville and Service Employees International Union Local 503, that's SEIU. And then Resolution Number 2826 is as it appears on the agenda, a resolution adopting the letter of agreement between the City of Wilsonville and Wilsonville Municipal Employees Association.
What else do we need to hear? Do we have staff presenting report on these?
Yes, you do.
So, good evening, counsel. My name is Andrea Villagana, I'm the HR manager here for the city. Thank you for bringing, or reading the resolutions for us and the change for me, Barbara, thank you. The current SEIU collective bargaining agreement expires on June 30th, and we have begun meeting, or we began meeting to negotiate the new collective bargaining agreement starting in early 2020. With COVID-19, there were quite a few pauses that we decided to take, and in May, we began to meet again with the hopes of having a swift resolution for the negotiations for both contracts. For the SEIU bargaining unit, the unit did request to make some language changes that were related to legislative changes. And also, we negotiated a 1.5% cost of living increase for that bargaining unit. The SEIU unit is the unit that covers our transit drivers and our mechanics. For the WILMEA bargaining unit, which is our general unit, which covers most of our other employees, we negotiated an extension of the current contract for one year, and also a 1.5% COLA. So both of these contracts would expire now, next year, in 2021, June 30th. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for that information. Counsel, any questions? I think the cogent point is that in the uncertain times that we're in, that a one-year extension is beaten from what we would-- extension is beaten from what we would normally do, but it seems prudent and responsible at this point in time to see if we can get kind of past the largest amount of uncertainty and onto some kind of a new normal that would enable us to then talk about a longer-term agreement a year from now, if that is the case.
That was the goal of our bargaining teams, yes.
Yes. I'm not seeing any questions. Is there anybody that wants to ask? If there, if there is not, we could be open to a motion for an action on Resolution 2824, first of all, with, I don't have that wording, but as read by the city attorney in the revised language, with our SEIU Local 503. Counsel Ackerball.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2824.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Second by Counsel Linville. Questions, comments? Not seeing anybody. Counsel Lin.
Well, I just noticed that there was some minor language changes in the, so my sense was that there was some bargaining with the group that went on in addition to the, just the one-year extension. So I, it was not, it was not, originally I had thought that the contracts were just, was just a, an one-year extension with a percent and a half increase, but there was some other language changes. Am I correct in that?
That's correct. For our SEIU contract, the SEIU team did want to negotiate changes in the contract to the language that was related to union business due to some legislative changes that happened over the last two or three years. So there's a case that came about, about three years ago that changed some of the language, and then also legislation that happened last year here in Oregon.
Right. It was pretty minor, but.
Okay. Other questions? I'm not seeing any questions. If we, are we ready to vote then? I will ask for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2824? Please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I see five affirmatives. That leaves no opposition, so 2824 passes five to nothing, bringing us to Resolution Is there a motion on 2826? Counsel Ackerball.
I'll go. I move to approve Resolution 2826.
Thank you. Motion by Counsel Ackerball, the second by Counsel Lehan. Thank you very much. Is there discussion on Resolution 2826? Motion to approve. Seeing nothing. If you're ready to vote, I will ask for the vote on the motion to approve Resolution 2826. All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five in favor, leaving no opposition at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Brings us, let's see, next we have continuing business, of which there is none. And then we have two public hearings, which are not related to each other, so I guess we'll need to do protocol on each of these. I need to find the wording here. Do we have?
We emailed you the script, Mayor.
I'm looking for it.
It was around six o'clock when you texted.
I got it. I got it. It's just along with some other stuff. All right. So if we could ask for the reading of Resolution 2820, please?
Resolution Number 2820, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan.
Thank you. I will call to order for the City of Wilsonville Council hearing on Resolution Number 2820, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, council will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format conducted as follows. First, city staff will present their report, then we will ask for testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. Due to COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Brown's order, this meeting is being held remotely. Information regarding how the public could attend this meeting remotely and give testimony was provided by timely written notice published in Pamplin Media Newspaper, formerly the Wilsonville Spokesman, on the city's website, and posted at the city buildings. Information published to the public explained the option for remote participation and testimony. Notice was also included that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing. If you are listening to this meeting remotely and have not already notified the city recorder that you wish to testify at the time of public testimony, anyone who is on the call will be unmuted and asked if they would like to testify. You should respond at that time. For those who responded by stating a desire to testify, you will again be unmuted when your name is called. If you prefer, you may also submit written testimony by email at any time during this meeting by emailing the city recorder at the following email address. This email address can also be found published on the city's website. Any testimony sent by email will be read into the record. Please include your name and mailing address with your email testimony. If you are having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the following number for assistance and to gain access to the meeting. And enter webinar ID number 81536056468 when prompted. Please note that long-distance charges may apply. When called to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request those providing testimony not repeat testimony already given to council. Simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is sufficient. So we have public testimony at this point, or do we have a staff report first?
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and city councilors. My name is Kimberly Riebel. I'm senior planner with the City of Wilsonville. It is my honor tonight to present to you the final Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. As you'll recall, we applied for this grant through Metro back in 2016 based on some community feedback. We were hearing about the rising cost of housing, both in terms of rental and homeownership. Recognizing this, the city council in 2017 established a goal to pursue a balanced housing mix to meet the needs of both current and future residents at varying income levels. We did have a couple delays in getting the project off the ground, but once we got started about a year ago, we've had a really thoughtful and interesting process to develop this housing policy plan that we hope will start to move the needle on some of these challenges that we heard were out there in terms of housing. So with that, I would like to introduce Deb Myhoff with Communitas Consulting. She is a part of the consultant team that worked on this project. So she was present at many of the task force meetings that we put together, as well as some of the planning commission and council meetings. I'm going to ask her to share her screen, and she will provide a very quick overview of the process of developing this equitable housing strategic plan and some key points. Thanks, Deb.
Good.
Okay. Hi. Good evening. Let's make sure I get this right. Okay, I think we're good. Someone holler out if we're not.
It looks good.
Okay, thank you. I can't see anything, so thank you for that. Good evening. I'm Deb Myhoff, Communitas. I'm part of the consulting team that was led by Echo Northwest and also joined by Common Works Consulting to develop the Wilsonville Equitable Housing Strategic Plan before you this evening. I will provide you a brief overview on the process we went through, what we heard, what we learned, how that shaped up into some priority actions from the community, and then also some thoughts about next steps. But before I get into that, I thought it would be good to do a brief recap of the equitable housing definition we used to develop this strategic plan. And simply put, equitable housing is more than just affordability. It's really seeking to make sure all people have housing choices that offer diverse, high-quality, physically accessible homes that are close to opportunities and amenities, and also reasonably priced. This equitable housing also represents a system that accounts for the needs of families with lower incomes and communities of color. It reflects on the history of housing discrimination and also fair housing policy. So project purpose was to establish a policy framework that responds to community needs and seeks to find ways that you all can work toward better achieving that full definition of equitable housing. I think Kim mentioned, but in case she didn't, this was funded through a grant from Metro's 2040 Planning and Development Grant, and the effort launched last spring. So our process, early in the process, we did quite a bit of market research, looked into the data to learn about what are the gaps and needs in the community. And then we took that information, and we went out to the community and stakeholders to really ground-truth it and test it out. We had interviews and focus groups, targeted outreach to renters and other underrepresented voices in Wilsonville. There were surveys, Let's Talk Wilsonville's website, you may have participated in some of the stories. And then we also worked with you all, the task force, the planning commission, and others to highlight and bring forth the priorities that we were hearing from the community. And we developed a framework for action, the proposed plan before you tonight. So a little about what we learned and how we addressed that through the plan. So when we looked at the market, the current market, and also trends for future projections of growth, there were a few highlights we gathered. Currently in Wilsonville, there's a greater share of people over 60 years old living in your cities than the rest of the region. Almost a third of Wilsonville's population are 20 to 40 years old, so kind of the millennial generation. And there are a growing number of Latinx families finding a home in Wilsonville. And more importantly, or really importantly for this plan, majority of residents rent in Wilsonville, and these are the most financially stressed residents. These are families with lower incomes or fixed incomes that have little ability to absorb economic shocks, such as the one that we're finding ourselves in right now. So we also looked at who might be here in the future. We looked into data and projections about that. Baby boomers, aging millennials, Latinx families are becoming increasingly important groups that will be seeking housing in the sort of near-term future as well as long-term. And then all three groups, big surprise, are seeking affordable housing options, but they may have different needs for the type of unit they want to live in, the size of unit they want to live in, even location within your city. So attached and multifamily units will likely still appeal to all of these groups because they tend to be less expensive and lower maintenance. But we think overall, there will be continued need for diversity of housing types as we go forward. That's what the data said. So as I mentioned, we went and talked to stakeholders and community members to learn about lived experiences and the things that data don't measure or tell us. So we used those things we heard from the community to really guide us forward in the strategic plan. We got insights to the challenges that employers and workforce folks are having with the high housing costs. We heard from some homeowners that they're struggling to maintain or adapt their homes to better accommodate their physical abilities. We heard a strong desire from many folks around the community, a real broad cross-section, a desire for more accessible and one-story living, thinking about wanting to stay in the city for the long term as they age or as their family members age, being able to accommodate them in Wilsonville. And then we also heard about costs and barriers of constructing housing from those folks who build. And hearteningly, we heard quite a bit of interest from nonprofit housing providers to continue or build new partnerships for more affordable housing in Wilsonville. So we took the information we learned from the market study and all these conversations and started putting the pieces together and chart this new path forward that addresses existing needs, looks to welcome new neighbors, and then finds a way to help you all continue to thrive together over time. So an important side note, you probably noticed in the plan document, we had a new section in there about COVID-19 recovery. We gave some thought about this strategic plan that largely was developed before the pandemic hit. And it just so happens that the timing and the structure of the plan really allow you the time and space to figure out what the COVID fallout will be and to be able to adjust your longer-term actions. And it's still very relevant today, the near-term actions. So the framework for action that we pulled together has three main parts. The policy objectives that you guided, the priority actions that bubbled up from these community conversations and the data, and then some ideas about next steps for implementation. So as I mentioned, you guided the policy objectives. We had the initial draft sort of late summer last year, and then we came back to you in the fall and got your guidance on shaping these seven policy objectives. And these really describe what success will look like from a policy perspective in the future, and they set the expectations for how this strategic plan will help members of the community better access housing. And then they form the basis by which we developed actions and implementation ideas to include in the plan. So there are two categories of implementation actions in the plan that were prioritized through all this dialogue and sort of thinking through what the real needs, deep needs were in Wilsonville. And they're broken into two. This first set of five actions that you have in front of you really are the ones that are getting at the priority issues. They're timely, they address the most pressing needs, they respond to policy objectives, they appear to be the most feasible right now, given the city's current partnerships and resources. The second set of actions are the other actions to explore. We heard these are also priority ideas that could really get at critical issues that the community is having and needs in the community for more equitable housing, but more work is needed to figure out if they're feasible and test how well they would respond to your policy objectives and understand better the trade-offs that are inherent in all of these, and make sure you're having those discussions with your community and stakeholders to figure out if these are the right way forward. And I'll remind you, I'm sure you have read it all, all of these actions are detailed at length in the plan with a lot of ideas about how you can move forward on each of these. And speaking of that, next steps for implementation, the final part of the plan is the ideas about how to begin if you adopt this plan this evening. So each action has additional details on ways to move forward, as I just mentioned. The final section is really focused on the bigger picture of keeping equitable housing work relevant and dynamic over time. It has things like funding tools outlined, suggestions on partnerships and work planning that needs to happen to move forward, possible approach to developing progress indicators to make sure the big picture, this big-picture policy framework is moving forward. So what's the sum of the parts? How does that all relate back to the policy objectives? We've given you a place to start on that. And then lastly, we've also outlined a way to think about how to keep the document alive and continually assess your needs and adjust priorities as actions are implemented and new needs arise. So with that, I'm going to hand it back to Kim. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. So I will present to you the Planning Commission's recommendation. They hold a public hearing in May on the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. And at that public hearing, they voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan by council. Based on public testimony, they also had a pretty extensive discussion on the notion of an equity or an inclusion committee to be formed by the city that would focus on these topics, not only when looking at implementation of the actions within this plan, but also thinking about defining equity in the community and how we can really approach projects within the city, both in planning and broader than planning, with this equity and inclusion lens. the city, both in planning and broader than planning with this equity and inclusion lens. So with that, I'll note that they are two separate recommendations. I think that the notion was really, the idea behind the possible equity and inclusion committee would be larger and extend far beyond the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on the plan development process as it stands. And we thank you again for your participation as we develop this plan.
Thank you. There we go. I can see everybody that way. Appreciate that. Council, questions, comments, observations? Councilor West.
Okay. I think I'll the whole council about this, HBA's letter regarding this topic. We all got a copy of that letter from the HBA. And they specifically talk, they really stress 1B, 1C in the plan as something that they actually encourage us to adopt. And there's a one topic here that's in the two category and the priorities to be further discussed, that I think I'd like to see be a bigger priority on that one tier level. And that's getting creative a little bit with the SDCs. They make the claim and argue that SDCs have significantly as percentage of housing costs and that the city should vest SDC rates earlier in the developmental process and then collect them later in the construction process, which will increase predictability while ensuring the city does not lose any infrastructure funding, is their argument. And then bringing housing to markets faster with more certainty and with fewer costs stands in families in search of all these different types of housing. And I, and some of what they say there resonates, and I didn't know what the other council thought, and I thought it'd be interesting for us to discuss specifically something that we might be able to make a priority a little bit sooner, and that's 2C.
I don't know how to follow that logic, and I am willing to listen to expert opinion here from staff or consultants, but it seems to me their plan is to pay less SDCs by, you know, figuring out what the dollar value on which they're based is earlier in the process and paying them later. It seems to me that we have got to build the infrastructure. We've got to build the roads, the curbs, you know, the, put the sewer in the ground and do all of those things. And I'm not clear how their proposal saves any money for anyone but them, which means we've got to come up with the rest of the money somewhere else. So how do we do what's being proposed and still build the infrastructure? Or is it just a plan that the money comes from somebody else?
Well, I'll start with that one. What I think you raised speaks to why that particular idea ended up on that second list. We did have, I think, a lot of interest in that particular notion, particularly as it relates to providing affordable housing, because we had a lot of conversations, not only among the task force, but in some of our focus groups where we talked to housing providers. And they did note that that's one cost factor that comes into the development of housing. We recognize that it's a very complex issue when you start looking about, looking at questions of if you take away the funding mechanism or you lessen that funding mechanism or you change it, it does have to be offset somewhere else. And so that's, I think, because there was a lot of interest, but also a lot of questions, that's why it initially started out on that second list. That being said, I do know that there have been some conversations that have occurred around the topic with some, with the Home Builders Association and staff. So it is something that the city is aware of and has acknowledged and has engaged the Home Builders Association in conversations on the topic.
Subsidizing SDCs is a discussion to have if it leads to getting housing product we wouldn't otherwise get, but the money to subsidize it has to come from somewhere. So again, I'm unclear how the methodology they're suggesting saves any money other than for the home builder, which means, you know, unless I'm mistaken and there's some other way that that funding is increased to the city, then we have to come up with subsidy from someone, somewhere else. If that is what we intended to do, that's a legitimate discussion to have.
I don't see, I don't read it as not paying it, Your Honor. I read it as postponing, like, so not paying it in total, but they make the argument that they don't pay it as early in the process and they finish paying it at the end of the construction process, so it's still paid. So there's like, that's how I read it, unless I'm misunderstanding and Your Honor.
So somewhere during that process, someone has to provide the money to finance the construction of that infrastructure until they get to the point that they want to pay it, right?
So it looks like that they're vesting SDC rates earlier in the developmental process and then collect the latter part at the end of the process.
Well, we can have a long discussion on this, but earlier in the process, the values are lower, therefore the percentages would yield fewer dollars, I think, unless I, again, unless I don't understand it. So anyway, this is a whole discussion to have. That's why it's on the list, but it's not something that is a slam, quick, just do it and it's taken care of, in my view.
I think you'd want to have a very robust discussion about the trade-offs and unattended consequences of some of the home builders proposals. We certainly have had conversations with them and we've asked some questions of them, and we are in the middle of a dialogue before this pandemic hit. So we're open to having those conversations, but I think your questions, Mayor Nap, are spot on. If you're delaying costs or shifting costs, somebody's paying those costs. When it comes to SDCs, it's a zero-sum game. Somebody's paying. Either we're collecting it through the SDCs or our rate payers are going to pay. Or we're not going to have money to put the infrastructure in the ground to allow development to happen if we're delaying the intake of SDCs. So there's a lot of things you'll want to consider before you make any decisions on that.
Yeah, so I think it's appropriate to have it on that tier-two list for discussion because, you know, it is something there's an interest in, but I don't see it as one of the things that we can do immediately for a quick accomplishment. You know, it'll take some dialogue and some figuring. Councilor Leehan.
Yes, and I would say along those lines, we don't have the right people in the room for a discussion on SDCs. That's, we have had a whole evening of discussion on SDCs. It's very complex and, and yes, when you shit in on one side, it comes out on the other side. So there's no magic solution, and we need the right people in the room if we're going to, once again, look at how SDCs are done, because that's a big undertaking. I did have some other questions that I brought up before. These things sound good, but not very specific. So I guess that's what happens when we put a task force together, that's the notion here.
Are you asking the question of Deb?
Yeah, maybe Kim I should ask. But I'm having a hard time getting, getting anything to come up on my, getting my agenda to come up on the screen. So I'm going by having looked at it before because, anyway, I can't get the Zoom thing to not take up my whole two screens. But anyway, from just watching the program there, it seems like it's a, it's pretty general kinds of concepts and not very specific as to, it doesn't speak to things like the mobile home park issue in Wilsonville. And I think we need to, to look at equitable housing and not look at that and the potential problem we're sitting on with that, with the two parks we still have, then that seems like a major thing we're missing. But maybe that's, you know, if we're only going to talk about apartments and single-family houses and townhouses and not get into other kinds of, kinds of housing. And I, you recognize we have a lot of seniors. Where does senior assisted living, how many people do we have in senior assisted living? You know, if we were doing an assessment, and where does that fit in the housing equity? The garage issue is something we haven't discussed. Is that something we're going to be covering at some point when you're, because I noticed that come by as changing parking requirements could lower, lower costs. I guess I moved you over here. I'll move you back here. It could lower a housing cost, but it seems to me that it's a very expensive thing to put your car in the house. And that's what we do, and with garages. And most of those garages that we build, especially in townhouses and apartments, are not filled with a car, they're filled with stuff. And that's true in my neighborhood as well. Two-car garages are, at best, have one car in them. But, so we're missing something in terms of the housing model. It seems like in our apartments, we could have, that it would be much more effective for the parking piece if you had a carport and a storage unit next to it that doesn't fit a car in it, so that you, you're not taking up a whole car parking space with stuff, because that's what we're doing on all of these. Anyway, this is a level of, level of detail on these strategies that I wasn't seeing in there, but I can't pull it up right now to say that for sure. But I'm presuming that if we have a task force working on these things, they will dig down into these other layers of actual things, strategies that could actually change something.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct, that the strategies are intended, I think, to be intentionally broad in a sense that we don't have all the answers to these potential strategies now, but we wanted to come up with the strategies that seem most promising to meet the needs of Wilsonville's future housing policy areas. And, and so I think there are a lot of questions to be asked as we actually seek to implement each of these actions, and I think that's where a lot of the detail will come down the road.
Yeah. Well, there's nothing that I would object to in this plan other than the lack of specificity, but, and I'm very, you know, proud of the work that has gone into it and especially of the citizens who have come forward and given input on this. I'm very impressed with the level of care that they've taken to respond on it, and I'm very supportive of it. I just, a lot of ideas that I, not being time to discuss, but there are a lot of more specific things that we could do.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Lindvill.
Well, I have, I have a question that's, it's not at the level of the specificity that Councilor Leehan is asking about, but I'm wondering, given the priorities in one and two, if the end result will be an increase in the number of rental units that are going to be available in the city of Wilsonville versus opportunities for homeownership?
Well, I think, I don't know that we have an exact answer to that necessarily, but looking at the list on particularly the first, the first category of actions, I think they're targeted in both directions. So we do have a possible 1A, which looks at a potential transit-oriented development site. You know, I could see something like that potentially most likely being a rental unit, perhaps a subsidized or partially subsidized rental project. But I really do think that 1C and 1B and 1C, that's going to be looking toward a potential, more likely than not, single-family and/or missing-middle types of housing, which they could be rental or homeownership, that's not necessarily going to be dictated. But I do think between that first set of actions that are outlined in the plan, that they're really addressing both areas. You know, I don't, obviously, a lot of the city's future residential growth is planned in Frog Pond, particularly south and east, and so that's going to drive a lot of that split, but you also will have the potential in other areas like town center where you might see multifamily residential development, which might most likely be rental, though not necessarily always. And so it seems to me that we're, I think we tried to craft an approach that was looking at both types of housing, rental and homeownership opportunities, and trying to give weight to each. You know, how that exactly plays out with the ratio, I think that's something that over the coming years we can track as we do our annual housing report and we look at other obligations we have for assessing our housing stock as we continue to grow.
Well, I know there's a, there's a tension between affordability and ownership, and especially with the need to have some subsidization for either down payment or for purchase price. But I, I think about, well, I think that in some cases, the rental market may appear attractive and more as if it's affordable for low income and even subsidized housing. The potential for uncertainty in raising of rents by owners becomes a potential for people to end up being unhoused and their housing being unsecured, just simply because they can't continue to afford, they can't rely on a steady price that they can live with and over time, and they're at the mercy of rental increases as well. And I know that there are, there are references in the plan to acknowledging the need for homeownership in terms of creating wealth and stability for our community, and I applaud that. I just am afraid of where the priority, when it's the actual words that say homeownership are in the strategies to pursue and, you know, to further flesh out. I know that there, with the opportunity for looking at middle housing and for ADUs, there are some opportunities for people to own very small homes that could be affordable and could even have some subsidies involved. And I just am concerned that we don't create a potential for homelessness because people can't afford increasing rents.
Thank you. Councilor Leehan.
Yes, one other thing. I'm in the process of helping someone with an estate sale that involves a one, a two-bedroom, one-bath house in Wilsonville, on a corner lot. And I have met with three different realtors, two of whom said- And I have met with three different realtors, two of whom said, "There's no market for that product in Wilsonville." You, I, I, and I, and I see that product, I look online, that product is all over the place in Tigard and King City and other places, and somehow, the, the notion is, there's no market for that product in Wilsonville. I just don't get that. Because it is a house that someone could get into, a, a single person or a couple, a young couple, or an empty nester or something. It's a two-bedroom, one-bath, nice house. But, um, but I don't know how you go up against that, and when the building trades likewise want to build the same house over and over again, uh, in Wilsonville. You know, it's, it's the, they, they build the three- or four-bedroom house with two-and-a-half baths, and that's the only house they build, pretty much. Sometimes it's bigger and has bigger rooms, but that's the house they build. And, uh, I, I don't know, it's, uh, it, it perplexes me that, that the need for housing is apparently so different here than it is in Tigard or, or Canby. How, how is that? Because they, they're not building the same products. Yeah, go, go ahead.
I'm, I'm so sorry, councillor. Mayor, do you mind if I just interject a little bit of something here?
Certainly, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Um, a lot of the things that are coming up here, really, and then reflecting on them, really point to the need for Wilsonville to cultivate and build its partnerships around organizations and people that are carrying out things you want to do. People in company or organizations like Habitat for Humanity and Proud Ground, which do affordable homeownership. They can build all sorts of different kinds, they can buy all sorts of different kinds of homes for affordable homeownership. You could start building some partnerships with lenders, with realtors who are marketing products to certain folks that you are seeking to provide some stable housing for. So, I mean, the, the, the action around building partnerships and nurturing those partnerships is not light. It seems light, but it's super important, um, because they need to know those opportunities are available in your city and you're really welcoming there. And then I think the other thing that, that gets unlocked with that is also additional funding to help you carry out a lot of these actions.
Good comment. Councillor Ackerball.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, there's a lot here. There's a lot here in our, in our conversation tonight, and I think there's probably been a lot, um, in the conversations with the task force, and want to express, uh, express my appreciation for all of the members of the task force that have been contributing to this discussion for some time now, um, as well as the Planning Commission. And we've received quite a bit of, um, comment from the public about this plan as well. And I appreciate the public, you know, listening and, um, being involved in that way, too, sharing their thoughts. And, you know, Councillor West brought up, um, one of the communications that we received, but we've also received many others, you know? And I think there's this, um, this call to look at different angles and different approaches and different, um, types of solutions and tools will be necessary. You know, in my view, I see this plan as something that's working to identify where the gaps are for our current and future residents, um, and to try to figure out, how are we going to fill those gaps? And, um, I think, you know, ultimately, this is, meaning that we want, we want a place where all of our community members can be in a good spot. But the, that's a big question, that's, that's a big task. And, um, you know, I think there needs to be continued discussion on the details and the specifics, but this, um, this plan is, is our start in, in putting up a framework to, to work on, and, um, I'm, I'm really supportive of the work that's gone into creating this plan and, and what we have before us tonight, you know? Certainly, more discussion needs to happen and more dialogue, and, um, many people need to be involved in that, and these partners and investing in the different partnerships of, of all different entities that can help. I do want to circle back to, um, you know, our recommendation from the Planning Commission was kind of twofold, both to, to look at this plan, um, and, and they're recommending this plan through the work that they've already done, too, but, um, to also look at having a, a body, um, that could look at the implementation of this plan under a lens of equity. In our work session, I'll reiterate, I guess, you know, some of what I said, because it still really sits with me, um, from the work session on, on page two, there's, of the plan, there's that quote about "Housing equity means that people have housing choices that meet their unique needs." So that's, maybe in some cases it's rental, maybe in some cases it's ownership, maybe in some cases it's a unit that looks one way or another way, or supports multi-generational living situation, or, um, you know, it's, it's going to meet their unique needs. But then that second part also, "Without racial and economic disparities." And, um, this line, "It's a key component of a larger strategy of achieving greater equity." And I think that's just, that's so important, and I think that that is why, um, the Planning Commission is also putting forward a recommendation to have a group that could help bring this, um, kind of larger strategy work forward. So, um, I see that an equity group could contribute both in, um, that larger strategy work, but also specific to the details, the implementation of this plan. So I think that's a, a really key and important thing. I, I think that, um, you know, as a council, maybe, um, I, I believe that, that diversity and equity inclusion, um, these really should be cross-cutting themes for all of the work that, um, the city is doing, but I think we're understanding, um, that, that we need to really have intentional efforts in that area, intentional partnerships, um, and feedback channels to get there, and, um, you know, maybe a well-supported equity group would be an important part of that type of ongoing work, in addition to the, um, complex details that, that we're seeing on the implementation of, of this work. So I'm supportive of, yes, this is big and complex and, and detailed, and yes, I think there's a reason for the recommendation that the Planning Commission put forward, too, precisely because of, because of that nature of, of what we're looking at.
Okay, uh, so we have ranged fairly far here beyond just asking questions of staff. I would like to get a motion on the table, after which we, according to Mr. Roberts, could have our discussion about what we think, you know, not just about factual questions. Uh, Mr. Councillor, ready to make a motion on Resolution 2820?
Your Honor, I move to...
Yeah, we have some.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2820.
Hey, Mayor? We have some, we have some public testimony...
Yes. You still got public testimony waiting, huh? I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, that's all right.
I wasn't going to forget that, but I did then. So we need to take public testimony first. Do we have live or video or what?
Um, we have, uh, virtual.
Virtual.
Let's see the name. All right.
Several?
Uh, yes, we have Garrett Pryor.
Okay, Mr. Pryor.
All right. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, City Council, uh, and, and all who have been involved, uh, bringing this, uh, plan forward. I'll just share a quick story about what housing equity means to me. Um, so where I grew up in Ohio is very similar to the east end of Portland. I grew up in a majority-black and immigrant neighborhood, very poor-quality schools, and when my father lost his job in the eighth grade, uh, we searched for more suburban community that had a great school system, similar to Wilsonville. And so we found a modular home we could move into, and for the first two years of my high school, uh, my room was the couch that we slept on, and we had a few cousins also living in my house. And so my passion for what equitable housing and what affordable housing means in Wilsonville, where I live now, uh, I think back to that younger, my younger self in ninth and 10th grade and through high school, and what that access to high-quality education did in changing the trajectory of my life. Um, I'm here to present the Wilsonville Alliance for Inclusive Community Statement. We support the plan, the Planning Commission's equity charge for larger efforts, um, and to really, uh, like you had just mentioned, Councillor Ackerball, uh, that this plan should identify the key gaps in direct action. And so I think while we go a step further as far as better, uh, really being clear and defining what those key gaps are, um, because similar to, uh, Councillor Linville's comment a few hours ago in the work session, um, there was a bit of concern that this plan didn't as clearly articulate those needs. Uh, but through the Planning Commission's discussion, which we have a lot of respect for, uh, we do think that the plan does pick them up in different areas, but that this committee could really be where that is, is sent forward. So my possible kind of recommendation tonight is that when you put the charge for this equity committee that should deal with more than just housing, that, uh, when you, you direct them to work on the housing element, you identify those key gaps that we included in our recommendation in that charge for the committee. Um, the other comment I wanted to make about the committee, we were thankful that the Chamber of Commerce of Wilsonville and the Home Builders Association also joined WAKE in supporting the call for an equity committee. Um, our Wilsonville group already has, represents the racial, gender, religious, and sexual orientation diversity in Wilsonville, and through the, uh, three elements of celebration, which we're doing for Juneteenth, advocacy, which we're doing in this, uh, equitable housing work, and then intentional dialogue, which are going to be some future efforts. Um, I really feel like we, we've started something here, and we'd love to talk with the city about collaborating and maybe building upon our effort, efforts for the city, so we ask you to pass the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pryor, appreciate that. Additional testimony?
Yes, we have Andrew Engel.
Mr. Engel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Coming through?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, councillors, for this opportunity. I am here to support the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. Now, Wilsonville has experienced 30% growth since 2010, and I am happy to be part of that growth. I grew up in Salem, and then I went out of state for several years, and I finally moved back to Wilsonville, uh, to Oregon in January of 2017. Since then, I've had to move twice in town, as it seems to be standard practice to raise rents 10 or 15% when offering lease renewals. So if you'd like to ask me any questions about renting, please do so. I appreciate Wilsonville. My daughter's growing up here, going to parks and the library. Uh, we've loved getting to know the area and the community. And we moved here because rents were more affordable here in 2017 than elsewhere. But as I look around, homeownership is not affordable. I work an excellent engineering job in Tooulton, making above median wage, and buying a home would still be a hardship for me. That means that Wilsonville is filled with thousands of other people who all face completely unaffordable housing in this community. Now, I'm new to learning about Wilsonville's economy, but I look forward to continuing to learn and to participate. By most measures, Wilsonville's a successful community. We have high wages, high employment, high education levels, and a pretty young population. Uh, we have Portland proximity and high-tech businesses and natural beauty, but rent and home prices are still climbing. Um, and as, as a renter, as we've moved from apartment to apartment, we've watched local property management perform remodels and facelifts. It would have been necessary for longevity of the facility anyway. They rebranded luxury, and they charge hundreds of dollars more in rent. So what happens is, we have high turnover, long-term residents depart for good, and the population in those apartment complexes shift towards white-collar demographics that are already capable of homeownership, and they're just looking for a place to land until they find the right house. Now, what does this do? Those who are unable to buy, who are already kind of trapped in a lifetime renting situation, they get left behind when an area experiences economic growth. Ownership is one of the main ways we can build economic stability, but it's out of reach. Wages remain stagnant, but inflation drives up cost of living and forces renters to, to move to more remote communities. And that's, this means that they face, um, they face higher costs, it's more expensive to commute, they have to move, and they lose access to a lot of the affordable infrastructure and the, the larger opportunities that some of these, uh, metro areas have to offer, um, for affordable living resources. What it also does is it entrenches the risk, the risk of the generational wealth and income gaps. You move to a rural area, you lose education opportunities, and you lose social services, and you lose all of these opportunities that you get to kind of build towards a more prosperous future. So when people can't buy into a growing community, uh, staying to rent or moving elsewhere, both of those are losing situations. So from my perspective, um, as I look at Wilsonville, I'd really enjoy seeing a town that focuses on benefiting all of Wilsonville. I would like to see a town that makes sure that both affordable rents and affordable ownership are accessible. And I think we need to make sure that we don't ignore or aggravate the economic divides that are growing in our communities. So with that, I would ask you, please pursue the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and make sure we prioritize access to housing and growth for everyone who can't get to it right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional testimony?
Yes, up next is Roseanne Johnson.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Nap, City Councillor. This is Roseanne Johnson, representing the Home Builders Association for Metropolitan Portland. I, um, did submit, um, the one-and-a-half-page document, um, as was referenced by Councillor West. And, um, as a member of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan Task Force, my first recommendation, bolded in the testimony, is to utilize Implementation Priority Action 1D, which is the tax abatement slew of opportunities, um, provided by staff and, uh, the consultants in the appendix, specifically the, the Hulte and the Vertical Housing Development Zone Tax Abatement Program. Both of those are authorized by state statutes, um, the consultants wrote extensively about those in the, in the appendix, and, um, I appreciated working with staff and the consultants on, um, those ideas, as well as Councillor West in the, in the task force, and think that those would be, um, excellent opportunities for, um, first-time homebuyer, um, homeownership amongst, across, um, demographics. And then moving on to the second, um, recommendation, which was in the document, um, priorities, 1B and 1C, which I will say, I'll just look together, um, middle housing and the urban growth expansion areas. Clearly, middle housing will be part of all of the single-family zoned, presumed single-family zoned areas in the expansion areas. So effectively, no longer only single-family detached housing there. And, um, I know that the city just received word that it, uh, received the full grant amount...
Mayor?
$350,000 for the middle housing, which is excellent, congratulations, or sorry, excuse me, for, um, the expansion Frog Pond South and East master planning. So congratulations, and I just want to stress those priorities, because as you and home builders know very well, um, development does not occur in a week or a month or a year even, it takes several, if not handfuls, of years to arrive at, uh, housing structures for people to actually live in. if not handfuls, of years to arrive at housing structures for people to actually live in. Finally, the recommendation around the SDCs. I listened to your robust discussion on those. And yes, we have been in conversations with your staff. And thank you, Mr. Cosgrove, for referencing that. Yes, we will continue those discussions. And I know we gave our elbow air bumps right before COVID started at our last meeting. Hopefully, we can continue those virtually and then maybe at some later date in person. The SDC's argument really related to collection is really the simpler one I'll start with. It's not asking for any kind of subsidized subsidy on the on the collection side. It's the same amount that that we know is completely necessary to fund infrastructure, the pipes, the roads, the sidewalks, everything that has to be done. So we don't, we're not arguing with the costs on those. We just simply want to delay the collection and therefore realize the carrying costs. The only one that's not going to realize the gain is the banks, frankly. And then I will guarantee there will be an opportunity for the homes to be lower priced, especially over the years
Mayor?
as the development costs go down, and then therefore the the housing costs have an opportunity to to fall and not be under so much pressure with those those clearing costs.
Mayor?
Am I coming out of my time?
Yeah, we're way past three minutes here.
You're well past it. If we could, Ms. Johnson, can you wrap up quickly?
Absolutely. So just wanted, like Garrett said, we come together with the Wilsonville Alliance for Inclusive Communities and the Chamber of Commerce and support the Planning Commission's recommendation to set up the separate equity body charged with reviewing city policies and regulations under that lens. So thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Mayor, you need a Thank you very much. So I suspect Mr. Cosgrove is going to tell us that we have passed 10 o'clock, and if we want to continue the meeting, we need a motion from council and at passage. The question would be perhaps, how much additional time do we have to do? We still have a budget supplemental to do that is mandatory before the end of June, so we really need to do that. And that also then has a piece in the urban renewal meeting to do an urban renewal budget that has to be done on the same schedule. So I guess the question is, are you willing to meet for another hour if it takes that long? I'm hoping it doesn't.
I think you can wrap it up in 30 minutes, but if you want to be safe, you can
You think you can do 30 minutes? Okay.
Oh, yeah. We have two more people to testify, so maybe maybe make a motion to continue until 11:00 if necessary.
Yeah, I mean, rather than do that than run up against the 10:00, 10:20, 10:35 or something.
Yeah.
Councilors, your motion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilor Lindvall.
I move that we continue that we continue the present council meeting to 11:00 PM or sooner if we finished.
Would that include the urban renewal?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Ackerwall. Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
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 I'm seeing all five reluctantly and not enthusiastically, but I understand. So that's 5-0. Additional testimony?
Yes, up next is Rudy Kadlob.
Good evening. Can we dispense with the introductions and the address and all of that?
Yeah, as long as you submitted it for the record.
I'm never brief, but I'll try. Nearly 20 years ago, our company, in partnership with the city and the state, set out to create a complete community in Wilsonville, a community as some of you, Councilor Leahan and Mayor Nap, recall, were based on three development tenets: connectivity, diversity, and sustainability, in the broadest sense of those terms. And, you know, diversity before was part of the national conversation. Sustainability means both environmental, social, and financial sustainability. Connectivity to connect within and without the community. In the broadest sense, I think we have achieved quite a bit along those development tenants. And I would suggest that if we applied those development tenants across the entire country, we might not have the same issues that we have today. We made a groundbreaking effort to include housing for people with mental illness into a new home community. That's never happened before. In some ways, over the last 20 years, we've made inroads into breaking down the misconceptions and bias surrounding mental health. But we still have a long way to go in creating equity and justice for all discriminated classes in America today. To that end, I wholeheartedly support the work of the Equitable Housing Task Force, on which I served, and I recommend adoption of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, and in particular, the vertical housing tax credit, which will assist in developing affordable mixed-use residential development. But it's not enough just to pass legislation. We passed legislation in 1964 called the Civil Rights Act 56 years ago, and look what progress we've made. It's embarrassing. We still have such a long way to go. And so please, by passing this tonight, don't just wipe your hands and say, we've checked that off the list. It has to be your, it has to be part of the conversation. You have to look at this every day and every week. If you want to get into the the details, you're going, you can't just ask the task force to wave a magic wand, and all of a sudden, we're going to afford to have affordable housing. It has to be part of your discussion, and it has to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kadlob. Appreciate the comments. Next testimony?
Yes, Julie Fitzgerald.
Good evening.
Hello, this is Julie Fitzgerald. I'm a former city councillor, and I served from 2012 to 2016. And I wanted to say that I support this Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. I think it should be adopted. And I'm really interested in a serious effort to find creative and groundbreaking ways, really, for more people to own a home in Wilsonville. I think we can set a standard for a large number of other communities to follow, just as we have with the principles that Mr. Kadlob described. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional testimony?
That's that's all the public testimony, Mayor.
That's all the public testimony. All right. Thank you very much. And have we we received in advance of the meeting quite a bit of written input from different people? Has there been any written testimony that council has not received?
You've received everything that we've received up until 5:00 PM.
Yes, Your Honor, the last testimony I received was at 9:42 from Julie Fitzgerald, and I forwarded on. And then she also provided
Public.
verbal, yeah, testimony.
Okay. All right. If there is no other public testimony, and is that correct, Mr. Cosgrove, no other testimony?
Correct.
I will close the public hearing at 10:10 PM. And now, I will ask the council, is there a motion with regard to Resolution 2820, which we can have some discussion, should you wish? Can't hear. Mr. West, are you trying to talk?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2820.
Thank you. Motion from Councilor West to approve. Is there a second?
I will second that.
A second from Councilor Leahan. Is there discussion now? We've heard an awful lot of discussion. It's clear to me, I would say, that we need the plan, and we need a strategy to go forward with the plan. And the second part, the strategy, I feel like we have a robust proposal in front of us, but we need to look to staff to help bring us that appropriate strategy, be it a committee, a longstanding committee, a housing committee only, a equity including housing committee, or how would we best do this? That's a answer for later. Anybody else? Really? No discussion? You really ready to vote on this? Councilor West?
Yeah, I am really proud how it was learned through this process, how Wilsonville already has a history of overperforming compared to the rest of the state, in my opinion. I may be biased, but I think a lot of the evidence shows how we are on the tip of the spear on being equitable and thoughtful in the type of housing that we offer, and making sure that we're compassionately and ethically thinking of everybody throughout our city, no matter what like circumstances they're going through, whether it's mental illness in Villaville, where myself and Councilor Ackerwall live, or now we're talking about more equitable housing, making sure that we're meeting the needs of other Bumbel populations. I just want to say I'm very, very proud of Wilsonville, even before I moved here, taking on, and that you, Mayor Nap, and Councilor Leahan spearheaded, and really were trailblazers in this effort that many people in the state have not even caught up to us on. And we already offer a large diversity of housing, more than most of the state also, where we offer so much multi-unit dwellings, also, and apartment dwellings for people too. So we're continuing to improve on that, always looking to be better. And I just want to give a second to just give a shout out to you, Mayor Nap, and you, Councilor Leahan, for being vanguards in that area. And I really appreciate the work you've done, and your legacy is part of that, and good job.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the words. Only only sad thing is that in spite of the fact we've made progress that some other people haven't made, we still have so much Other comments? Are you ready to vote? Yeah, ready to vote? All right, I will call for the vote then. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2820, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Appreciate. That's a major milestone for us, and it just sets the stage for going forward with a lot more to do. So appreciate all the staff work, all the public input, all the contributions that have been made so far. I hope we'll have the support and the engagement of all those people as we go forward.
Thank you.
All right. So then we're down to budget stuff, I think. Resolution 2821. Councilor Lindvall?
I just wonder, Your Honor, what we will do with the second recommendation from the Planning Commission.
What would you like to do, or how would you like to address that?
Well, I would like to make a motion.
All right. I tried to, that's, we can do that. I tried to say I wasn't sure how to proceed and was hoping staff would bring us back some more specific
That's what I would like.
Proposal.
I would like to recommend that you let us drill down on that, see what some other communities have done. I had talked to the mayor about some other initiatives and programs that I was looking at to address this as well. So let us bring you back some recommendations.
Yeah, my motion was only going to be to charge the leadership to review a, you know, frameworks and models and bring us back something.
So so why don't you go ahead and make that motion?
If we don't make the motion.
No, I think that's good. It would be good for you to give that that direction. I like that. Go for it.
Okay. All right. I would like to move that we charge the our city leadership to develop a, to do a review of models and develop a recommendation for a framework for an organization for Wilsonville that will focus on equity, opportunity, partnerships, and accountability.
I'll second that.
So that was a motion by Councilor Lindvall and a second by Councilor West. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. Would you like to discuss further?
I guess I'll say something. I'm hoping that that, when we investigate, that that will look at task force versus the committee, and whether it's temporary or ongoing, and influence that they can have. Maybe it's working closer with the Wilsonville Accountability Inclusion Group, with Gary Pryor, or maybe forming our own group. I hope that that's in the direction that we are looking at how that committee is moving forward, how people are nominated to it and whatnot.
If that's the understanding of the second, is that the understanding of the maker of the motion also?
No, I really wanted to leave it to the to the leadership to review models in other cities and come back with a recommendation.
That's the way I took it.
Is that all right with a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so motion is by Councilor Lindvall, second by Councilor West. All in favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0, unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, I think we can proceed, and thank you for that, Councilor Lindvall. We can proceed to Resolution 2821.
Resolution Number 2821, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Thank you. Have a staff presentation by Ms. Rodocker?
Yes.
I need to read the hearing thing probably first, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me get my phone tuned up here again and read this huge, long thing again. Oh, a call to order, a public hearing for Wilsonville City Council on Resolution Number 2821, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, the council will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format, conducted as follows. First, city staff will present their report. Then we will ask for testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. Due to COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Brown's orders, this meeting is being held remotely. Information regarding how this public could attend this meeting remotely and give testimony was provided by timely written notice published in the Pamplon Media Newspaper, formerly the Wilsonville Spokesman, on the city's website and posted at city buildings. Information published to the public explained the options for remote participation and testimony. Notice was also included that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing. If you are listening to this meeting remotely and have not already notified the city recorder that you wish to testify at the time for public testimony, anyone who is on the call will be unmuted and asked if they would like to testify. You should respond at that time. For those who respond by stating a desire to testify, you will again be unmuted when your name is called. If you prefer, you may also submit written testimony by email at any time during this meeting by emailing the city recorder at the following email address: cityrecorder@ci.wilsonville.or.us. This email address can also be found published on the city website. Any testimony sent by email will be read into the record. Please include your name and mailing address with your email testimony. If you are having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the following number for assistance and to gain access to me. That number is 13126266799, and enter webinar ID number 81536056468 when prompted. Please note that the long-distance charges may apply. When called to testify, please use, state your full name and address for the record. I request those providing testimony not repeat testimony already given to council. Simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. Ms. Rodocker?
Thank you, and good evening. So we have our last supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2019, 20. The single largest item that we're requesting is a $725,000 increase to the Water Operating Debt Service Fund. What we had at that point of time is we had extra cash, but unfortunately, the investment environment just wasn't conducive for tying it up for a period of time. So we went ahead and paid off the debt. As of June 1, the Water Operating Fund, for the first time in 25 years, has no debt. By paying it six months earlier, we actually saved $12,000 by paying it six months earlier, uh, we actually saved $12,000 in interest. Our next item is for our COVID response. Uh, we're requesting a increase in expenses of $200,000. Uh, this is being, um, paid for in part by a grant that we received from SAFE, which is our workers' comp, um, helping us to pay for some of the, uh, charges that we had incurred for worker safety. Uh, the remaining balance is spread out amongst the different funds that have, uh, our programs that are receiving both, uh, during and, and in preparation of all the engineering controls that, uh, we installed at the various, uh, facilities as we reopen to our, uh, customers. And we have several, um, capital projects that were net zero, where we're just taking money from one project and moving it to another. Uh, we also have two projects are requesting additional funding. Uh, one for $12,200 was for the Two's Road, 110th to Graham's Ferry Road, and the other is $15,000 for the, um, exit 283 congestion improvements. Sorry, it's really hard to breathe through these masks. A second one here. Um, and, uh, both of these projects have been completed, and these are just a follow-up, uh, to make sure that we have the additional funding.
You're the last one.
I'm free.
Kiss the mic.
Okay, I won't kiss the mic. Okay, so I've been free to my mask, so now I can answer any questions, should there be any.
Okay. Uh, council, any questions? Can't seem to get any questions for you, Ms. Rodocker. I'm sorry.
Oh, darn.
Do we have any public testimony?
No. No.
Neither virtual nor in person?
No.
Nope? All right. If there's no public testimony, I'm going to close public hearing and ask council, what is your pleasure with regard to Resolution 2821 on the supplemental budget? Counselor Akerwal?
I move to approve Resolution 2821.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Lind...
I'll second. Second the motion.
Second of Counselor Lindvall, uh, approve 2821. Discussion? Last one of this fiscal year, we're trusting. Uh, here we're down to the, near the end of the fiscal year, and needed adjustments, especially with all the COVID responses that we've done. But we're in good shape at this point, so that's good. Um, other discussion? Don't see any discussion. Uh, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor of the motion to, uh, adopt, uh, Resolution 2821, please say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
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 We have unanimous vote again, five in favor. Thank you very much. Uh... That then brings us pretty close to the end of this meeting. We do have an urban renewal agency to do the budget. That could be quite quick, uh, once we're done with council. Uh, Mr. Cosgrove, city manager business?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Jacobson, legal business?
No legal business.
Thank you very much. Anything further council needs tonight? I will call us adjourned at 10:26 PM. Uh, do you need time to ramp up your recording?
No, we're ready to roll.
You're ready to roll? All right. So let's see here. I've got to change my file. All right. We're ready? We're called to order the Wilsonville, City of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency meeting for June 15, 2020 at 10:27 PM. And request a roll call, please.
Member Lindvall?
You're...
Present.
Member West?
Present.
Member Akerwal?
Here.
Member Leehan?
Here.
Chair Knapp? Chair Knapp?
I'm also here. Thank you very much. Um... So we have a full committee. Is there any citizen input?
No.
No citizen input. Uh, we have one item on consent agenda. If we could ask for that.
Minutes of June 1, 2020, URA meeting.
Thank you. Uh, is there a motion on the consent agenda item?
Your Honor, I move, uh, that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Uh, thank you. Motion by, uh, Ms. Lindvall. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Ms. Leehan, seconds. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0, unanimous, bringing us to public hearing. URA Resolution 308.
Resolution, you, Urban Renewal Agency Resolution Number 308, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Thank you. Oh, this public hearing thing under COVID is so long. Uh, so...
Do we have to say that? Do we have to say that for the third time if there's no one here to testify?
I don't know. We don't even have an attorney. I mean...
Wait, can we get a, can we get a ruling from our, uh, parliamentarian?
Um, if you want to be safe, you should read the script.
Could, could they just say as...
Okay.
Well, I, let me suggest, we need a shorter script. I mean, we can't have a 20-minute script or whatever this is. This is ridiculous.
Yeah, it is kind of bad. So we'll look forward to seeing some thought about revising that. But in the meantime, I'm going to read it. Uh, called to order the, uh, Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency public hearing on URA Resolution Number 308, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, the agency will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format conducted as follows. First, city staff will present the report, and we will ask for testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Brown's order, this meeting is being held remotely. Information regarding how the public could attend this meeting remotely and give testimony was provided by timely written notice published in the Pamplin Media Newspaper, formerly the Wilsonville Spokesman, on the city's website and posted at city buildings. Information published on the, to the public explained the options for remote participation and testimony. Notice was also included that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing. If you are listening to this meeting remotely and have not already received, not, already notified the city recorder that you wish to testify at the time of public testimony, anyone who is on the call will be unmuted and asked if they would like to testify. You should respond at that time. For those who respond by stating a desire to testify, you will again be unmuted when your name is called. If you prefer, you may also submit written testimony by email at any time during this meeting by emailing the city recorder at the following email address: cityrecorder@ci.wilsonville.or.us. This email address can also be found published on the city website. Any testimony sent by email will be read into the record. Please include your name and mailing address with your email testimony. If you are having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the following number for assistance and to gain access to the meeting: 1-312-626-6799, and enter webinar ID number 81536056468 when prompted. Please note that long-distance charges may apply. When called up to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request those providing testimony, not repeat testimony already given to the agency, simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. Thank you. Ms. Rodocker?
Well, thank you very much. I do appreciate you taking the extra time for, uh, the public hearing notice. Uh, the Westside Program Income Fund thanks you, as it is in need of an additional, uh, supplemental adjustment of $17,800. Uh, the, this is for the Two's Road, 110th to Graham's Ferry Road. Uh, this project was funded by both the city SDC funds and urban renewal. And that is the one and only supplemental adjustment we have for urban renewal.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions for staff from the, the... No questions that I see. Uh, is there any public testimony?
No.
No public testimony. If that's the final word, I'm ready to close the hearing, going once, going twice. Close the public hearing at, uh, 10:32. Uh, what is the...
Mr. Chair, I move to, uh, approve URA Resolution Number 308.
Motion to approve by Counselor Leehan, second by, by Ms. Leehan, second by Ms. Lindvill. Uh, any discussion? Hopefully, we're done with the budget for the year. I mean, okay. Uh, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution Number 308, please raise your hand. We have five votes in favor. Thank you very much. That's unanimous. Uh, no opposition. Anything further for the agency?
Good night.
Not at the moment.
Good night.
Thank you very much. I'll call us adjourned at 10:33, and have a very good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you all. Goodbye.